Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It looks like we're going to have a very full meeting. We have a lot on the agenda, so we will get started. It is Tuesday, August 12th, 2014. It is 6:00 PM. All my council members are here and accounted for. And we are going to lead with a prayer and then the pledge. I'm going to ask Chaplain Rob Dewey to lead us in prayer. And Ken, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being able to live in this town. We thank you for the leadership of the citizens as they come together to look for the best way to lead us forward. We also thank you for blessing us with the judicial officials that will be sworn in this evening. And we just ask your special blessings on the first responders that are out protecting us now. And in your holy and blessed name that we turn this meeting over to you. Amen.
We face the fact. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, please proceed. Rob Packard, surgery.
Yes, it is. And I graduated from a successful surgery. Mr. Packard, are we in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act?
There we are.
Thank you. The fourth thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the ayes carry. We have a public hearing right after that. Ms. Farrell, if you would lead us in the public hearing that is regarding the Sea Island Mobile Home Court on Myrick Road.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. We tonight, this is to receive input on a request to amend the concrete plan for future land use matter by changing the land use designation for a 1.4 acre tract of land from medium density to high density. This property is located at the intersection of Myrick and Rifle Range Road and is otherwise known as Sea Island Court Mobile Home Park. There is a corresponding item ordinance rather under planning the business.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. I believe we have someone signed up to speak on this issue.
That's correct, Mayor. Howard Gatch.
Yes, my name is Howard Gatch.
Please come forward.
Sure. Howard Gatch, 20 Atlantic Street, downtown Charleston. I'm the potential developer on this project, and I'm just here to ask any questions when it comes to time.
Thank you, Mr. Gatch. Is there anyone here else that would like to speak on this issue? Any council members that'd like to speak on this issue? This public hearing is closed. And then I believe we have some swearing in to do. So if I can ask the judges to come forward with their families. We have some spaces designated, just like on TV. Everybody's got their Bible and their designated holdees. Okay, and I'll try to go slow for you. It's hard as an auctioneer. You know, I tend to talk a little fast, but we'll do the best we can to slow it down. I do solemnly swear that
I do solemnly swear that.
I am duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state,
I'm duly qualified, according to the Constitution of this state,
to exercise the duties of municipal judge for the town of Mount Pleasant.
To exercise the duties of municipal judge for the town of Mount Pleasant.
And that I will, to the best of my ability,
And I will, to the best of my ability.
discharge those duties and will preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Discharge those duties and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge to uphold the integrity and independence of the judiciary.
I pledge in the discharge of my duties
I pledge in the discharge of my duties.
to treat all persons who enter
all persons who enter the courtroom
with civility, fairness, and respect.
With civility, fairness, and respect.
I pledge to listen courteously.
I pledge to listen courteously.
Sit impartially.
Sit impartially.
Act promptly.
Act promptly.
And rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
And rule after careful and considerate deliberation.
I pledge to seek justice
I pledge to seek justice.
and justice alone.
And justice alone.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You are so sworn. Congratulations. If I could get the council to join me in here. I just won't be able to see. It's okay. I'm gonna step to the side. I'm gonna hang out over here because the light is blind. Watch out, Gary. Yes, it is very dark.
Those seats are open, folks. Do you all understand? Those seats are now open.
You're welcome to come down front. We have a special presentation tonight from recreation, and I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Gary Sandoval.
Welcome, everybody. I hope you had a chance to look at the table here as you came in. We have some pictures, some older pictures. You know, back when Hurricane Hugo hit years ago, we had our recreation department was actually at the bottom of Alhambra Hall. And Alhambra Hall took a pretty good beating, and we lost a lot of our history for our recreation because of the damage to Alhambra Hall. Well, years ago, I had the pleasure of being coached by Coach Eddie Duffy, as well as probably some of you. Anybody in here, were y'all coached by Coach Duffy? I see a couple of you in the crowd. I know you are. I went over to talk to him. I had him, I asked him to coach with me, you know, not too long ago. And anyway, he came over, and I went to his house, and I saw these pictures on his wall. And I said, you know, Coach, these are historic pictures. I mean, these go back to the '60s. And I asked him if he would donate them to the town, and he said he'd think about it. Well, some years had passed, and after he passed away, his son Rocky remembered me asking about these pictures. So Rocky contacted me not long ago and offered to donate the pictures to the town. And I was shocked. Not only did he give us some pictures, but Coach Duffy was meticulous on keeping rosters. And he could tell you each game, how many yards a running back ran and who scored what touchdowns. He had rosters of everybody he ever coached. He had remarks about how well they played. He checked off whether you were at practice or anything. Just so much information and detailed information on his teams. I was amazed how well he kept records of what he did and all. And so now, all of this has been donated to the town that we can put in our archives and that we can show a lot of these newer kids and all that are playing for the town now and coaches, how our program started. So we're honored today to have some of the Duffy family, Shannon Duffy, his daughter and his granddaughter, y'all welcome to come up, that are here today to honor Coach Eddie Duffy for all of his years of service. I don't even know how long he coached, 30 years or so, I'm sure. I had the pleasure of, the one year he coached with me, I remember that we were hitting the sled, and one of the kids was doing it wrong. So Coach Duffy said, move out the way. And he turned his hat on the other way around. He said, this is how you do it. And he's hitting that sled. And I was saying, Coach Duffy. You know, because he was older then. And I was saying, that's okay. You don't have to do that. And well, the next day, he didn't show up to practice. And then the following day, he showed up. And I said, Coach, what happened to you? He goes, son, I couldn't get out of bed. But that's how intense he was, and that's the kind of coach he was. Even though he really shouldn't have been doing that, he was, you know, he inspired these kids, and he wanted to show these kids the right way to do things. And he didn't have a problem with getting in there and doing it himself. So Paul, would you like to say a few words? Because he coached Paul as well. You'll see some pictures up here with Paul as well.
Yeah, I noticed it. Thank you, Gary. I noticed it in some of those pictures along with you. And, you know, Coach Duffy and my dad coached forever together. Fortunately, your dad is still with us. But if you've ever seen the two of you together, my dad and Coach Duffy, they were called Fred and Barney. Forever. Called Fred and Barney. And I have one story I can tell now, but we had practice one Saturday morning. It was always Saturday morning, 9 o'clock, Saturday morning, 9 o'clock. But afterwards, because Coach Duffy was a small guy, I was 13, I felt pretty good. And I grabbed him, and he threw me down, and he dropped my cervix. I didn't breathe for two days. Anyway, I just really appreciate the Duffy family. It's good to see you.
It's good to see you.
We'll ask Shannon to come up and say a few words. Shannon?
My dad really was a big believer in athletics for kids, not only to teach the importance of physical activity, but to teach the qualities of character, leadership, and team building. So I'm really glad that the rec department has grown to such a big outfit and that this can be in their building today. Thanks.
Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Next, we have the privilege of honoring some of our long-serving employees. And to help me with that, I'm gonna ask Recreation Director Ken Ayub to come forward, please.
I'd just like to say thank you to the Duffy family for their contribution. It is good to know what the history of the department that you're working for is like. And even being from North Charleston, I recognize some names in there from the programs when they played All-Stars at North Charleston, some of the very people I went to school with. So I know what that means and, you know, from experience myself with my family. So thank you again to the Duffy family for that. It is a very good privilege to come up here. Usually, I'm up here when we're recognizing teams. But I'd like to recognize one of our employees, Stacy Harrington, Division Chief. Stacy, would you please come up and bring your family? James, Jamie, and Jenny. One of the advantages of working here is the experience that I have on my staff. You're looking at an individual who has not only put in 20 years here at the town of Mount Pleasant in the role of Program Division Chief, but also previous 10 years in the recreation field. So I have someone with 30 years' experience, and I don't, you know, we won't go age-wise. I have a little bit more. Still, 30 years' experience. When you have that type of experience on your senior staff, it's good, because now you can depend on, and Stacy is one of those individuals that you can depend on. She's in charge of a program that in 2013 had over 55,000 participants in her program, ranging from aquatics to gymnastics to guitar lessons to summer camps. And we're seeing those numbers increase. And I know 2014 is gonna be higher than that. And it's all because of her leadership and her family's support. They have been very helpful to us, and I couldn't possibly run a department without the experience of someone like Stacy and really her dedication to it as well. So I want to thank you so much. You make my job easier, and that's always a blessing when a department manager is insane. And I sincerely really thank you, and I think we might, and Mayor, if I have something for you over here.
Yes, congratulations.
James is the one to take you out tonight, right?
Yes. With my money.
It should be his. It should be his.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, little girl.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mayor.
You're welcome. Big smile. Congratulations.
Mr. Peel, our Public Services Director, will lead us into recognition of a few more employees. Jody?
Would Gerald Mazzique, Tyrone Brown, and Eric Sanders, please come forward? It's my pleasure to recognize Tyrone Brown, Gerald Mazzique, and Eric Sanders for 20 years of service. 20 years ago, these three men submitted an employment application for several vacant labor positions in the Public Service Facilities and Grounds Division. At that time, I was Division Chief, and I interviewed each one of them. I was impressed. They impressed me so much during the interview, I offered them the position. I had a strong feeling that these three men would be outstanding employees, individuals that work hard, set high standards for themselves and for others to follow, move up within the ranks of the Public Service Department. And here are three fine examples. Tyrone Brown was hired as a laborer in the Facilities and Grounds Division in August of 1994. 12 days after being hired, he received a letter of commendation from the principal of Whiteside School for his excellent work. November of 1995, he transferred divisions to the Labor and Sanitation Division. Less than six months later, he was promoted to a vehicle operator. In October 1999, he was promoted again to his current position of Heavy Equipment Operator in Sanitation Department. Mr. Grant Brown is dependable. He reports to work prepared and on time. Mr. Brown understands the importance of good communication, and is a highly skilled and knowledgeable equipment operator. He supports our team members whenever needed, and is an outstanding asset to the town of Mount Pleasant. Congratulations, Tyrone, for 20 years of service. Next will be Gerald Mazzique. Gerald was hired as a laborer in the Facilities and Grounds Division in August 1994. 1994 was a good year for me. I got plenty of employees. On April 1996, he was promoted as a vehicle operator of Sanitation Division. A little over a year later, he was promoted to his current position as a heavy equipment operator. In April of 2004, he was presented with a letter of commendation from the Hamlin Community for assistance that he and his crew provided in helping clean the community, making it safe for children to live and play. Mr. Mazzique constantly demonstrates knowledge and understanding for his responsibilities as a heavy equipment operator, taking pride in the quality of work he performs. He is a very dependable employee and will assume other tasks as needed by the Sanitation Division. The town is extremely fortunate to have Mr. Mazzique as a part of our team. Last but not least, Eric Sanders. Eric was hired as a laborer in Facilities and Grounds in August 94. In July of 95, he was promoted to a vehicle operator. Less than one year later, he was promoted again to a crew leader. Again, in 1999, he was given a letter of commendation from the Mount Pleasant Rec Department for success of the state Dixie Softball Tournament. In July of 2000, Eric was promoted to his current position of Foreman of Facilities and Grounds Division. He was recognized Employee of the Month for the town in 2001. In August of 2003, he earned a letter of commendation for exemplary work and tremendous work ethic. In December 2004, he was recognized for his team's hard work and dependability in making sure that special events run smoothly and work success. He participated in a job shadow with a student from Lyman Middle School in February 2010. Eric plays a vital role in recreational events. His knowledge is dependable, has a strong work ethic, and communicates well with his crew. He takes great pride in his work. Mr. Sanders is undoubtedly an asset to the town of Mount Pleasant. And Eric, thank you for all you do.
Thank you, guys. A reminder that there are some seats open up here that were reserved earlier. They are open if you'd like to sit down or standing along the wall.
Eric, can you handle that minutes change? Can you introduce that minutes change?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would like at this time to refer to the Recreation Committee to have Coach Eddie Duffy's name added to the Wall of Honor over at the Jones Center.
That's a motion and a second, ma'am.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for your lead on this. It's awesome to have these wonderful memories recorded here forever. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the July 8th, 2014 Town Council meeting and the July 2014 financial statement.
Who's for approval? Second.
I have a motion and a second for approval.
Great discussion. Mayor, we noticed, would you like to handle that, Mr. Nichols?
Sure. At the, I read the minutes, and right near the end, there was, I think, just a transcription error having to do with the yeses and nays on mayoral compensation. I sent a note to our town administrator. Just wanted to make sure I read that correctly, that it was incorrect. Eric, can you help me with that?
Yes, sir. I do not have the language in front of me, but the error that you pointed out was in fact an error. And we'd be happy to move forward incorrectly.
Okay. Can we just bring this up next meeting to approve these minutes at next meeting once we send out that correction?
I think you can just make a motion to amend the minutes as discussed in your email. And is that amended? Yeah, I'll amend my motion to approve the minutes with the amendment as mentioned by Mr. Nichols.
Okay. And I'll, my thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second on the amended minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the ayes carry. Item number seven on the agenda is correspondence and public statements.
Mayor, we have several speakers. The first is Jim Owens.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Page, Jim Owens, live at 1197 Island Drive. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Pleasant. It's good to be here with you. Here to discuss something we've not had on the agenda for quite some time, and that's the parking garage.
Mr. Owens, can I just ask you a question? Are we gonna go with two minutes on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yep. I just basically have a few questions. And before I get started, I want to let you know that staff and Christiane, David Baggerini have been very supportive in all those details and trying to get information out. And I do appreciate that, all of us here. But a couple of the questions that I would ask that you would entertain and take a look at, and that's, has a developer met with final approval? Does a project submittal meet the number of parking spaces within the building limits of the parking garage as required by the parking license agreement? Does the project submittal include surface parking in order to meet the number of spaces in the parking license agreement? Does the project submittal meet the terms of the parking license agreement? Are you concerned that the people who currently use the surface parking will pay to park in the garage, or will they park down the respective right-of-way as they do along the What are the town's plans for future development adjacent to Shim Creek? With much discussion relating to the crab, the Coleman Revitalization Advisory Board, what has become of the preserving of the character Shim Creek Guidance Document developed by Mayor's Holman and Dodd's? In order to learn from the past, how did this project get by the crab with regard to complementing the creek's natural beauty and the health of its businesses, particularly the shrimping industry? Shim Creek is the heart and soul of the residents of Mount Pleasant and deserves to be well preserved.
Thank you, Jim.
My name is Diane Broom. I live at 3208 Carmel Bay Drive in Mount Pleasant. I want to thank Town Council for allowing us time to share our feelings about our hometown. So thank you. I grew up in Mount Pleasant. My husband grew up on Sullivan's Island, and our families are from Sullivan's Island. We raised four kids here, and we've all graduated from Mulberry and Wando High Schools. I'm a local realtor and often have the opportunity to work with buyers. When I learned they're from out of town, I'm always intrigued with why they chose Mount Pleasant as their new home. And here's what they say. "We enjoyed our vacation so much, we decided to move here. We love the location, close to the beaches and downtown. We love the small-town feel. It's charming. Great schools. Mount Pleasant is beautiful." I was curious what others say after visiting here, so I went to TripAdvisor's website. And I'll share a few comments that I found in regard to Shim Creek. It felt a little nostalgic. One visitor said, "We stopped here thinking that we would stay here for a little bit, but ended up staying for a few hours. We saw hundreds of pelicans and several dolphins. The people fishing were catching blue crabs as well as stingrays. Many kayakers and boats were coming in and out. We will return when we come back to Charleston." Another visitor says, "Highlights include watching a dolphin swim up the creek, being amazed by tiny crabs with one giant claw waving at us in the mud, spying schools of fish, birdwatching, and chatting with families fishing off the pier, relaxing, and great family time." Another said, "The brown pelicans swoop over the water. Dolphins were playing in the creek. People were fishing. Crabs were crawling through the mud. Wonderful." "We know the development will come. Towering garages and office buildings shouldn't be a focal point. We're blessed to live in a place known for its natural beauty. I charge Town Council and our mayor with guarding our town and its landscape."
Thank you, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you for your time.
James Scott, 506 Royal Avenue. Mayor, members of Town Council, I apologize, my, but I'm gonna vent a little bit. I read this morning's excellent op-ed by Will Haney, which laid out the details for the town's deal with Tech Small for the Shim Creek parking garage. As I read it, I thought about all the meetings that I've attended over the last 10 months, Town Council, planning, you name it. I've been here alongside many of my neighbors who are out here tonight. My wife and I both work and travel a lot for our jobs. We have two small children in Mount Pleasant Academy. We had to get a babysitter in fact, just to come out tonight. But yet, we still came, and we've been fighting for small changes to the overlay district that directly affects the community where we live and where we raise our children. So you can imagine my shock and disappointment to learn, after 10 months of work on our end, that it took Town Council all of 15 minutes to grant Tech Smalls a variance to go up 10 feet along Shim Creek. Not only that, but to prevent spot zoning, the council gave nearly a dozen properties this incredibly generous gift along the town's most iconic waterway, Shim Creek, its cultural heart. Furthermore, I recently read a letter to the editor by one Town Council member, condescendingly calling folks like myself who've spoken out about these changes naysayers. What kind of public servant denigrates his own constituents, his own neighbors, for wanting to have a voice in shaping their community? Such pettiness is the antithesis of democracy and has no place in public It has no place in the public discourse of an excellent town like Mount Pleasant. I've seen all the letters you've received from the pro-development groups, the Chamber of Commerce, Pride and Realtors Association, Council of CEOs, et cetera. It's important to note that few, any of these groups are local, but they all share one thing in common. To them, Mount Pleasant is a commodity. Our great schools and proximity to downtown and the beaches are a currency that they trade to make money. The cramped densities and increased heights are simply a tool to ring more dollars out of the community that we have all built, not them.
Thank you, Jim.
As Will Haney noted in his op-ed, tonight's the time when we see where our elected leaders stand. Is it with the profiteers, or is it with the residents?
My name is Martha Adams. I live at 409 Royal Avenue. Mayor Page, members of the Town Council, thank you for allowing the citizens and residents of Mount Pleasant to have a voice in what is happening in our community. What I want to say tonight is that I know that the plans for the Coleman Overlay District and that the crab plans were made with the best of intentions. You have said, and former Councilman Nick Collins said, that great efforts were made to involve citizens in that planning process. He also said that the council was very frustrated because He also said that the council was very frustrated because not many citizens showed up to participate. Apparently, not many people were aware of what was underway. I know the week-long design charrette must have been exciting, and I'm sure that Bill Eubanks is good at what he does. What concerns me is that this phrase being bandied about, urban density instead of suburban sprawl. It's stated as if creating urban density in our town will prevent sprawl, but we already have sprawl. The only thing urban density might do is postpone somewhat more sprawl, but it cannot prevent it. And what it definitely will do is create more traffic. And it would be great if people lived, played, and worked within a small area so that cars weren't needed, but is that really happening? Does everyone who lives at the Boulevard walk to work? Or do they get in their cars and cross bridges and go downtown Charleston or North Charleston? Do any of you ride your bikes or walk to work or to these meetings? Another problem with the plan is that now that the citizens of Mount Pleasant are aware of it, and now that perhaps you finally have our attention, what we are saying is not... is that this is not what we want for our community. I'm not saying that they are bad plans or plans made carelessly or with evil intentions. They are just plans that we, the people who live here, disagree with. Please, please, hear us now and let our opinions matter more than those of developers who don't live here and more than people who live in other parts of the greater Charleston area. It is our town.
Thank you.
Shouldn't we determine how it grows? And please bring back the designing viewpoint.
That's all I have. I defer my time to someone else.
That's all I have signed up for then.
Thank you. That's all we have signed up for discussion.
Sir, I signed up.
Sir, we have you all signed up under Planning New Business Number One, which is on the height for Coleman.
I said, general comments, Mr. Jones. So did I.
I did too.
Mr. Bagwell, I have your name under DRB, but if you care to speak, please come forward.
I'm going back and ask, please, put down the general comments. I think she did that.
Come on up, Jimmy. Come on down.
I appreciate it, bud.
I will give you your two minutes.
Could I have Millie's two minutes?
Can you? Absolutely.
Millie, can I have your two minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. And I may not need more than two minutes, but Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, and members of Town Council. It's hard for me to believe that I've been coming down here for those 10 months as well. I've been to a lot of these meetings. I've been to a lot of planning committee meetings. I've been to the planning commission meetings. And one thing I know is that we're headed in the right direction. I want to thank you all for listening to the people that are in this room tonight, for reducing the setbacks, number one, for increasing parking places from 1 to 1.5 parking places in developments along Coleman Boulevard. I think those are all positive steps in the right direction. I also thank the Planning Commission has come up with some very positive recommendations to reduce the building heights from 75 to 60 and from 60 to 50 or 55 to 50. I think those are very positive recommendations. And I think that I will see the Town Council adopt those tonight. I certainly hope so. But I can tell you this, there's... Most of the people in this room here tonight are here because they're not happy with what is taking place on Coleman Boulevard and in the Shem Creek area, and we're here to tell you about it. I would like to ask all those folks that are in the audience tonight, who are here who oppose the crab plan as it is now written and the developments as proposed on Shem Creek, to please stand up. As you can see, folks, we're here because we're not happy. And I'll tell you what, I want you to take notice of the room here tonight, the people that are here, and I want to say one other thing. We've been told that this was just a small group of zealots and people who are just out to make trouble or something. We've been called naysayers, as Mr. Scott pointed out. But it's not a small group. I've talked to people all over town. I've talked to them all over Charleston County. People all over this area are concerned about Shem Creek, because somebody said it's the cultural center of Mount Pleasant. We want you all to slow this down and to take stock of what's happening. Nowhere on Coleman Boulevard should there be 75-foot buildings. I personally think 60 feet is too tall. But we've got to work towards something that we can all live with. We need a unique community, not someplace that looks like every place else in the United States, or as somebody said in the paper just recently, a southern Boomtown. This is not a southern Boomtown. This is Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, the greatest place in the world to live, and we hope you can preserve it for us for many years to come. Thank you very much.
I can't... Ms. Edwards likes to get into this room. Thanks, ma'am.
And I really come here to reaffirm what Jim Bagwell's just said. You know, we rely on you all. We thank you for listening to us. You know, when you think of the number of people that voted in the last election of Mount Pleasant, it wasn't overwhelming. And you know, these people elected you, and they appreciate you, and they want to talk with you and have you talk with them and get together and work out a reasonable situation and feel like you have represented us. And you have made some wonderful changes. But I plead with you to slow it up, to listen to the people. We don't expect you not to listen to everybody, but now is a time that we can come together as a community to work together, to be together, to make Mount Pleasant better, to keep what is very important. You know, we can't reinvent historic Mount Pleasant, and we don't expect somebody from Wichita, Kansas, in the chamber to understand the ambience of Mount Pleasant. So we want you, please, to help us, to meet with us, and to work with us. We want to be a part... We don't want to be confrontational. We want to be a part of your Mount Pleasant and your representing us. And I thank you for what you've done. It's a time that you give to us as a community. I thank you for doing that. But let's slow up and work together. And I thank you, each one of you personally.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the moment. There's one thing that's troubled me kind of in the beginning, but it really dawned on me this afternoon in conversation with someone about the developer is going to be giving parking spaces, and then they're going to rent those parking spaces. There's money going from the town, almost $3 million, and in that period of time, they're going to be renting spaces and money's supposed to come back. I think the City of Charleston is still waiting for any income from Charleston Place, and that's been 20 years. Everybody knows. It's been in the paper a number of times, and there's accounting never allowed for any profit to show up, so they haven't even paid on the principal. So that's one point I want to make, and I just don't think that it would happen here either.
Thank you, Charles.
Cheryl Gregory.
No, we want you to make the slow walk. We get, you know, more effect that way.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Gregory. I live at 1551 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. That's in Simmons Point. Tonight, I admit I'm a plagiarist. I'm going to read what Will Haney wrote in the paper today. He said it so well. This evening, Mount Pleasant Town Council will vote on a monumental issue that may change the look and the feel of our town forever. This vote on the Town's Planning Commission recommendation to lower some building height limits in the scenic Shem Creek and Coleman Boulevard corridors will cast the die as to whether Mount Pleasant maintains its cozy coastal charm or begins to look like every other southern Boomtown, Boomtown suburb. The commission recommended reducing the current 75-foot allowance to 60 feet and the current 55-foot allowance to 50 feet. From the outside, the well-organized groups of citizens fighting for the lower building heights may look like locals, not facing the realities of their growing, changing community that is now the ninth fastest growing in the country. However, this issue did not become controversial in a vacuum. What is at stake tonight is as much about trust in their elected officials and their town's processes as it is about the building heights. Plans for these two corridors have been on the books for years, as were some seemingly acceptable building height limitations close to the scenic Shem Creek. Then the town entered into a joint venture with a non-resident developer to build a multi-story building at the corner of Coleman Boulevard and Mills Street.
Cheryl, I hate to cut you off. I gave you an extra 30 seconds. If you'll leave a copy, I'll make sure everyone gets a copy.
I think someone was giving me their time.
Oh, you deferred your time? Okay. Thank you, Frank. Thank you. Thank you, Elaine.
Okay.
We're with you, Cheryl.
Okay. For reference, this is the vacant lot between the lighthouse on Shem Creek and the Mills Street intersection. In this deal, the town promised to pay the developer more than $2.77 million over a term of 15 years in return for the developer granting access to 276 parking spaces. 132 spaces allotted for public use during the week as a pay-as-you-park provision. Woo-hoo! And full use after hours under the same provision. And on weekends, his multi-level garage with an office building on top. The developer has not submitted architectural drawings or specific plans at that point. Upon further review, the developer said in a July 13 letter that the numbers of the parking spaces didn't work unless the town planning committee would grant him a 10-foot height variance to 55 feet, which they granted, sight unseen. In fact, the town submitted a text amendment for a special meeting for the parcel in September 2013 without any clarity or transparency. After knowing what was being presented by the developer and the planning committee back in July 2013, the special planning and development committee met, and within 15 minutes, as has been said before, approved the request of the developer to construct a 55-foot-tall structure on this parcel, which is contiguous to Shem Creek. However, as said before, the law does not allow such spot zoning for one parcel. So in order to make it legal, the council had agreed to automatically raise the height 10 feet for nine other nearby parcels of land. So what the townspeople thought was a 45-foot height limit near the iconic Vista suddenly became 55 feet. With this kind of willy-nilly approach, it's not hard to see why the townspeople are turned off by their elected officials telling them to trust the corridor plans, which we've already seen problems with, that are in place. The mayor and others have also said they don't want Mount Pleasant to get the reputation of always changing the rules, because that will hurt growth and investment. Well, the same goes for your citizens. The rules change to us, too. What was a 45-foot maximum quickly became 55 feet. So the next variance, hmm, 65 feet, and on and on until Mount Pleasant looks like South Florida. There was a seminal moment during one of the recent Town Council meetings in which councilmen chambers were packed by the people trying to save Shem Creek and Coleman Boulevard. One council member asked why there was opposition to tall structures in these two corridors, but not elsewhere in Mount Pleasant, such as along Johnny Dodd's Boulevard. To paraphrase Councilman Chris Nichols, people don't drive visitors and guests out to Johnny Dodd's Boulevard to see multi-level buildings and big shopping centers, but they do drive them down Coleman Boulevard to see Shem Creek, to enjoy the unique scenery. Shem Creek is to the residents of Mount Pleasant what White Point Garden is to the city of Charleston. So can you visualize this building at White Point Garden? Would there be any opposition to that, you think, in Charleston? That's why we're here.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Elaine, did you? You did. Thank you. Henry Siegling.
Do you have any extra minutes, Henry?
No, two minutes is all I need.
Okay.
It's a sickness. Change of pace. My name is Henry Siegling. I live at 914 Cliffwood Drive. I'm not here to speak about the building on Coleman or whatever, dude. I'm here to speak on traffic in my residence, the Groves, Cliffwood Drive specifically. My journey here started on June 23rd. A simple phone call to the Mount Pleasant Police Department to see what could be done to have radar on Cliffwood Drive to slow these people down. For three weeks, I never had a response from anybody. Three weeks. I emailed Eric Demora, who always answers emails. He started things going. I emailed Sergeant Kim Herring. She put up the traffic sign up there that tracks your speed. In a 46-hour period, 1,016 cars zoomed down Cliffwood Drive. At 7:30 on June 30th, I emailed Sergeant Herring, to which I have not had a response yet, what does it take to simply have radar on Cliffwood Drive? And I have not had an answer from anybody on that. The Groves is changing. Old houses are being renovated. New houses are being built. New families are moving in. More... There are children in the Groves now more than ever before. When I moved there 30 years ago, my children had no one to play with in the Groves, so there were none any there. School starts next week, and the 500 million people that live on the other side of the bypass are going to come over to Moultrie Middle School. And how they going to get down there? They come down Cliffwood Drive. They come down Cliffwood Drive. Simply again, how do we get a radar unit on Cliffwood Drive? Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
Out of Mayor.
Out of Mayor.
Out of Mayor, can we see if we can't do something about that, maybe starting tomorrow?
Hold on just one second. I'm gonna defer to my police chief. Chief Ritchie, can you answer what we can do to get a radar?
I can answer that. Yes, we have been there. I'm sorry you haven't seen them, but we will increase that presence, but we have been there and will continue to be there. And if you don't see them, call me. Yes, sir.
Or call the mayor's office.
Thank you, ma'am.
Tom Leonard.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for listening to my thoughts on the Coleman Boulevard project. My name is Tom Leonard, and I represent the Tri-County CEO Council as its executive director. CEO Council is a group of 24 lead officers of companies in the tri-county region that employ in excess of 10,000 associates, so more than 10,000 jobs. Some of the members are John Darby, Tom Penny, Dick Elliott, many residents from this area from Mount Pleasant, also Anita Zucker, Lonnie Carter, David Dunlap, Ken Seeger Plus. This council stands for progress. We stand for quality economic development and growth that is well thought out and brings jobs to our region, and jobs are the motivating issue in this state when you've thought through this project. We also stand for accelerated infrastructure improvements that are properly planned, additional parking, and road improvements on Coleman Boulevard are progress for this area. We stand for active support of workforce development and improved education. We also stand for enhancing the quality of life in the tri-county region, like the investments you've made Mount Pleasant into your parks and playgrounds. I got a flyer on rifle range plus waterfront park, part two. The Coleman Boulevard project was approved by Mount Pleasant Town Council, and investments for progress were in place to complete the project. Now council may be considering the decision to move the project forward. Now, this will negatively impact many economic commitments that have been made and are planned. I would urge you to hit the pause button on that, on reversing your position versus Coleman Boulevard project. If investors can't trust, and this is the issue in the area, to stick with its economic development commitments, they will invest in other areas that are sure they can make the investment. And many, and many folks like that, but that will negatively impact the region of Mount Pleasant in particular. Think about this. Mount Pleasant won't be as robust and will not have the taxes, the taxes for improved infrastructure, levels of service, schools, investing in quality of life, like your waterfront park, Shem Creek Park, your new soccer fields. That comes from what you do. To wrap up, this is a council that stands for progress. We ask you to pause, stay the course, and stand for progress.
Thank you, Tom.
Glenn Cowden.
I'm Alex Glenn Cowden, 737 Blue Fields in the town of Mount Pleasant. Thank you all for letting me speak. These are tough acts to follow here. It's a great team. Look, I realize that much work and taxpayer money's been put into this traffic court. I understand that we need growth. I'm all, I'm all in for developing growth. That's not a problem. We need to get tax revenue. You need more money. What you need more money for? We need, need more money for the chief. We need more money for these guys that work in sanitation. We need, we need more money, and people are moving here. I would hope, I have several factors for this growth to take place. One thing is leave Shem Creek alone. I forget that ugly, insulting, out-of-place, office, parking, garage. Rescind the authorization. It will be cheaper to settle a possible lawsuit than to pay this developer almost $3 million in the course of a few years. Two, out-of-place, out-of-character, unappealing monstrosity building on Coleman is enough, it's way too high. I'm talking about the Boulevard. At the Planning Commission, it was recommended we take 75 feet down to 60. I'd say bring it down to 45. This Coleman Boulevard could be a very eclectic, wonderful place with retail shops and restaurants for people to spend their money in and create jobs. Johnny Tops, that's the place. Highway 17. Most people are moving here. They're not moving to the old village. They're not moving over there at the island. They're moving up there on the topside by what country park is going to be. In closing, I'll need a minute. I was doing a little research today, and I was in the classroom with Professor Google, and I was looking up democracy, and I found an interesting thing. I said, we live in a democracy, best defined by our third president, Thomas Jefferson, in his first inaugural address, and he said, "All will bear in mind this sacred principle that through the will of the majority is in all cases to prevail, that will be rightful, must be reasonable, that the minority possesses their equal rights, which equal law must protect and to violate would be oppression." The majority is to my left. We elected you. You need to listen to us. You need to stop this. Take a pause with everybody saying, let's go. We can, we can do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn.
Julie, if you're in the crowd, I apologize. I can't decipher your last name from internet.
Hi, Julie Thomas, 1054 Internet Boulevard, here in Mount Pleasant. I recently moved back to Mount Pleasant. I was here, I lived here, '84 to '94. Helped rebuild after Hurricane Hugo. And from here, I managed, I've traveled in Europe, I have traveled throughout the United States and the West Coast. What brought me back here is I came back for Spanish moss, locally-owned businesses, and a sense of independence, yet tradition. When I drove into, onto Coleman Boulevard after being away for three years, or not being in Mount Pleasant for three years, and saw the Boulevard, I was like, oh my God, you know, have I hit San Francisco or what? It was so out of character. I hear a lot about progress. I'm a digital entrepreneur. Most of my work I do online. I've had the, people ask me where I work. I've got an office. You know, tonight I will be working on Madison Avenue in New York. Tomorrow evening at this time, I'll be doing a business meeting in Brisbane.
You have 30 more seconds, Ms. Julie. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. My point, point is, is that, my point being is that people are not going to be looking for office space within the next 20 years, looking for, people are going to be looking for tradition, experience, in continuity. They're not going to be looking for retail, all of this retail stuff. I heard, I'm sorry.
It's okay, Ms. Thomas. You did a great job. Thank you.
John Dodd.
Good afternoon, Mr. Dodd.
Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, members of council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide some insight. I'm not here to preach, preach to anybody. You know, my dad was mayor from 1976 to 1984. We grew from a village of about 7,000 people to 25,000 people. We quadrupled during that eight-year period. If he were here today to tell you his proudest achievement, he would tell you that the implementation and the passage of the land use plan was his biggest and crowning achievement. It's interesting. I remember riding, riding around Mount Pleasant with my father in his Ford Granada that the town of Mount Pleasant provided to him, and this was before the Mark Clark Expressway came to Mount Pleasant. He told me then, and it was so prophetic, he said, Johnny, when this Mark Clark Expressway touches down in Mount Pleasant, this city is going to explode. And, and part of the explanation that he gave me was that because so many people didn't like going over that Cooper River Bridge, that it was an impediment to growth in Mount Pleasant. And, and it was, and he was absolutely right. When, when the Mark Clark Expressway touched Mount Pleasant, this area exploded. I can remember him telling me about a call that he got from an executive at McDonald's that was complaining about the height limit on the sign at McDonald's at 17 and Bowman Road. Mister Mayor, how in the world can I have a McDonald's if we can't build a sign that people can see from the interstate? And, and you know, the fact of the matter is, is that we had a plan, and if they wanted to, to conduct business in Mount Pleasant, then they needed to abide by the plan. McDonald's came, McDonald's thrived, they're still here. My point is, I want council to abide by the master plan. If council abides by the master plan, I don't think all these people are here today complaining. What's happening is, we got a master plan, and people are coming to council and say, we want to develop, but, and we need this, 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 and that, or we can't make this project work. And I don't believe that's the case. Mount Pleasant will flourish, it will continue to flourish, and all I'm asking you to do is to stick to your guns, abide by the master plan, and it's okay to say no. They'll still come, and they'll still develop.
Ladies and gentlemen, the next two items on the agenda involve building height on Coleman. Everyone else I have signed up to speak has signed up under one of those two items. Is there anyone else left that wishes to speak under public comments?
Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Michelle Sinkler, and I live at 10 Saturday Road in Mount Pleasant, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League. I will say, it's always a pleasure to be here. This was my eighth-grade classroom, and it's nice to come here again as a, as a 45-year-old instead of a 12-year-old. I think I want to reiterate some points that I made in a, I'm here to speak tonight basically generally to support the Coleman Boulevard revitalization plan, not on a specific project. We submitted an op-ed that ran, I believe, last week, and I kind of want to reiterate those points, and I will do so quickly. I believe in what I hear today and what I've heard in the past, there are points on which we can agree regarding the Coleman Boulevard plan. We can agree that the region is growing, and the region is growing tremendously. We can also agree that many newcomers will choose Mount Pleasant. Many of you in the audience have. We have great public schools. We have a great quality of life. We've got beaches in the city. We've got great employment opportunities. I think we can also agree that residents and leaders alike expect quality agreement. So we've got that. Those are things on which we agree. In the past, growth has been accommodated by sprawl. That's been the case in Mount Pleasant, that's been the case in Charleston, that's been the case anywhere. Think Savannah Highway, think Glen McConnell Parkway. These were specific regulations that demanded sprawl happen. They were what the code said had to happen. It wasn't by accident, it wasn't inevitable. It's what the government demanded. Mount Pleasant has devised a way to do something better. Sprawl hasn't served us well. We've got seas of asphalt, we've got traffic, we've got clogged arteries. We know there is a better way. I would suggest that the Coleman Boulevard revitalization plan, which took months and months and months of study, is a better way. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. We shouldn't expect it to be. Is it a silver bullet to all the woes we face? Absolutely not. But the principles are sound, and the principles are these, that we accommodate growth by developing at sufficient densities and in patterns that will support local retail, residences, and civic uses, and that we can access all of these places by car. Absolutely. None of us are going to give up our heart, but we can also get there by walking and biking. I have seen it. I have seen kids now biking to the schools, and I really like it. I would suggest that these major principles, again, are ones on which the community agrees. I would say, however, we haven't done such a great job with the execution of the plan. Okay? The rub is with the execution and the details. As you, as a council, deliberate changing the details, do it. Be thoughtful, work with your excellent staff, with the residents, and your professionals, but do so in a way that does not compromise these principles. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. John, we have other people in front of you, I believe. There was someone else on this side, ma'am? Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Nancy Fairless. I live at 1111 Simmons Street, and I am here to, oh, I'm not against responsible development, and I'm not against development in the right place. My opinion is, the way I see Coleman Avenue is as an access to beaches. I see it as an access to Shem Creek. I also see it as an asset, access to neighborhoods along both sides of it that are lovingly tended, prideful places to live. I see Coleman Avenue as an access to interesting businesses that are unusual and personally owned. I love downtown Charleston and King Street, and if I want to go to J. Crew, I will be right down there. We do not need every town USA up and down Coleman Avenue. I also see Coleman Avenue as an egress from dangerous weather. I see it as an egress for those same wonderful neighborhoods for shopping, dining, where you go into a restaurant and it's local, and it's not a chain, and everybody knows your name, and sometimes say even remember what you like to eat. I think it's an egress for daily goods and services that we all need. I am specifically against the garage, the height, and the placement. I think our money and our energy can be way better served following the 2002 vision for Shem Creek and our fisheries and our fishermen and the people that need us behind them. It is the most glorious tourist place. I welcome the tourists. When I'm on Shem Creek and somebody asks me something, I tell them, and I tell them what a wonderful place, and I recommend our local restaurants. I adore it here. Don't ruin it, please.
Thank you, Nancy.
My name is Joanna Gigan, and I live at 206 Livev Drive, and I'm here tonight to speak for hopefully a lot of the residents here. We are not against responsible growth and development. We are not against the developers. We are not against the real estate people. have grown to love, one piece of property that draws others to it from far and wide. I was just in the old village the other day and met two new neighbors from... One was from New York, and one was from Charlotte. They did not come here to move to another city. They moved here to be close to the water. They moved here for a quieter way of life. They're trying to get out of the city, and if we keep developing at this pace, we're just going to turn into, like someone else said tonight, another southern boomtown. We've had over 4,000 people sign a petition asking you not to build this parking garage on Shem Creek. You can build it elsewhere. There are far more suitable places to build this. And I'm sorry to say that increasing the density on Coleman Boulevard is not going to prevent urban sprawl. The type of people that live in the Boulevard are not the same type of people that want to move out to North Mount Pleasant. It's just not the same demographic. So I'm all for preserving land, and I'm all for preserving our way of life here. Another thing is that you've promised 2.7 million of our taxpayer dollars, our dollars, to this garage that we have voted against, and we have spoken up and said, "We do not want this." Not only that, but the amount of parking spaces are... It's going to be the same amount that's already there. So let me re-say this, and then I know I'm running out of time. But the number of parking spaces that are there now is going to be the same number that's there in the parking garage. Not only that, but people are going to do just what they do downtown. When you drive downtown, what do you do first? You look for a spot on the street. If you circle around and around and around, and you don't find one, what do you do? You say, "Oh, I guess I have to park in the garage." So just because you build a parking garage doesn't mean that these people aren't going to be parking on the street first.
Thank you, Ms. Gigan.
I'm Barbara C. Smith, and I live at 410 Royal Avenue. And I'm not a speaker, and I do have what I want to say written down, but the last time I came before council to speak was when Vince Graham was beginning the process to build Ion. And yes, I spoke in favor of Ion, and that was not a popular stand at that point. I am not a lifelong resident, but I came here as fast as I could in 1968. And as many of you have, you've given your heart, and you've given your hard work to this town. Now I'm here to appeal to you as a citizen. Please, Town Council, look at what is happening to all the older areas of town already. I know that the overlay was done with good intentions, but after listening to Bill Eubank's presentation for the Planning Commission last month, I wonder how much input the citizens of the older areas, from Shemwood all the way down to the Groves, had in this process. He stated there were several projects on Coleman already on the drawing board, so he met with the owners, the developers, and I don't know who else he said, to get their input. I didn't hear anything about him meeting with those who would be impacted, like from Simmons, Fairmont, King Street, Wilden. They're perfect examples of issues that are just beginning. Next will be Brook Green, and so on down the street, as developers build as much as possible. Why would the overlay not have a buffer to protect these adjoining streets? It appears to me that the lines were drawn from Coleman to the parallel streets without concern for the neighboring communities. This should not have happened. The quality of life that a large number of residents now have has been and forever will be affected. Please lower the heights, especially from Fairmont to the Groves, where many residential areas exist. Zoning regulations are not set in stone, and over the years, regulations have changed, and they will continue to change, and it is not too late to fix this. We, as citizens, want to be heard. We too have invested our hard-earned money in the all parts of Mount Pleasant. We love the fact that it is a community with schools, stores, churches. We were a walking community, a biking community, and now with all the traffic that comes down Royal and Simmons and McCants, things are changing. Are your citizens, not small in number, as you can see, more important, or are the developers, the Chamber, the Board of Realtors, Coastal Conservation, the Post and Courier? I don't know, but thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm Mayor, Council members. I'm Louis Horton. My wife and I live at 138 Live Oak Drive in a house we built in 1987. I'm here to support the proposed reductions along Coleman Boulevard, the whole... All the reduction. I think the Boulevard was a wake-up call for a lot of people. I think the wake-up call for a lot of people was the Boulevard. I'm important... I'm supporting the reduction of all levels. I think my wife and I are pretty good citizens. We read the newspaper, we vote on every election, on the candidates and any proposal set forth. And although I live only three blocks away from the proposed garage, I'm going to say I was caught flat-footed, because nothing I ever read alerted me to the consequences of what council was considering, or to the license agreement pursuant to which we, as taxpayers, were paying almost $2.8 million. I don't think the proposed garage is the highest and best use of $2.8 million of the taxpayers' money. I'm wondering if... Because I see no return on it. And I'm wondering if council ever considered taking that same amount of money, condemning this property, and doing something that would be for the good of the community, such as what has been done on the other side of the creek. It's a wonderful development. And what I'm suggesting is perhaps something along the line of a, almost a Alhambra, except it could be a Shem Creek Maritime Center. It could be similar to the development of the Oak Museum in both North Carolina. It's a North Carolina Oak Museum. It could be a facility that would provide parking. It could provide a venue for displays of static, displays for depicting the history of Shem Creek, shrimp... Shrimping operations. It could have a movie like Dear Charleston down in the Exchange Building that would show what goes on in the life of the shrimp captain's day at sea. It could provide a venue for families to have reunions, such as at Alhambra. It could provide a sweet grass basket display area somewhere under the bridge.
Thank you.
And I would ask you to consider those possible uses.
John?
Mr. Darby? Oh, I'm sorry, he was first. You're welcome to come. Come stand up here and wait. As soon as he finishes, you can... He had his hand up first, I didn't see back there. Okay, certainly, you go ahead first. Mr. Darby concedes to your turn first. Oh, I think she wants you to go first, John.
Sorry, I didn't sign up. I was difficult with the parking space. I'm John Darby. I live at 15038th Road. Most of you know me. Sorry. That better? I will... Can I pick it up?
He was not signed up, ma'am, as were about five others that we have let speak on both sides. Yes, ma'am, I'm being very lenient tonight to allow everyone an opportunity to speak. I am extending their times, I'm doing the best I can. Others were also not signed up.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank you to everyone here who also took the time to come down here and speak. Like I said, I was born in this town in 1962. I have enjoyed every day of living in Mount Pleasant. I even played on the All-Star team with Coach Duffy. So there's a lot of memories, and a lot of friends, and people that I know here tonight. And, you know, this is how the process works. I'm glad they're here. I'm sorry that we didn't have more involvement with the Crab, even though some did come and speak, but obviously, it was a mess. And perhaps we can have those conversations again and get input. But I will tell you, 25 years ago, I was in this room as the developer of Brook Green, and I think it was one of the largest town meetings at that time. Friends, people I've known my whole life were very angry, and came in and opposed what's there today of the retail, Southern Seasons in Brook Green Town Center. And council, in their wisdom, felt it was important for Coleman Boulevard and approved the project. And yet, long after that, Ion went through the same thing, and then with the development of Seaside Farms, which wasn't even annexed into Mount Pleasant. Packed room, people had signs, very upset, because in the past, today, and in the future, it's just human nature to be concerned about change. And you've got to have faith in your elected officials that they will make the right decisions, and they have a long-range view of Mount Pleasant, and hopefully, it will be a net positive at the end of the day. Now, you all know, we were developers of the Boulevard. There's a lot of lessons learned at the Boulevard, and we haven't even been asked to share those. I think it will be better. I want to leave you with this. Ann Edwards, she said, "Slow down and work together." I urge you not to make a decision tonight. There's no need for that. Let's slow down and give the Crab and stakeholders and anybody else who wants to participate an opportunity to work together. Thank you.
John, can I ask you one question? This is just some interesting information that came through an email today. How long has your family owned the property where the Boulevard sits?
I'm not even sure. It was there when I was born. That was '62. Yeah, it was Roddenberg's Grocery Store. But I've... My guess is 70 years.
Thank you very much. Oh, yes, you're next, ma'am. Yes, and then, absolutely, Rusty. Ms. Chiquitas, come on down. It's all my week.
Thank you, Mayor Page and Town Council, for this opportunity. My name is Cecilia Franco. My husband, Pat Tobin, and I live at 734 Dragon Drive. I was lucky enough to move here in 1981 to go to graduate school at MUSC. I'm from Ohio, but I did not bring everybody with me. I choose to live in Mount Pleasant. We raised our three daughters in Mount Pleasant, going to the public schools there. I love Mount Pleasant. Every time I go abroad or anywhere in our country, when I go over the bridge, I feel blessed and privileged to live in Mount Pleasant. I would like responsible, reasonable growth, please. Please, lower the building size, lower the density, and please make safer, more integrated bike paths. Please, the bike paths. I live off of the Frontage Road in Creekside. I love to ride my bike, but I say my prayers when I'm on the new bike paths, because it just takes one errant driver to go over that painted line. So if anybody doesn't know what I'm talking about, I would love all Town Council, Mayor, get your helmet on and go on all these new bike paths. And please, we can probably do better. We live in a beautiful, beautiful place, and reasonable growth, being progressive is wonderful. But in a nutshell, please let us help keep Mount Pleasant pleasant.
Thank you, Ms. Franco.
Ms. Mayor, Council members, my name is Rusty Bennett, and I'm a 40-year East Cooper resident of Sullivan's Island. I'm surprised I haven't heard any other members of the Crab that have come up to speak tonight. I was a member of the Crab, and a very dutifully attending member, and I thought it was a beautiful example of participatory governance. It was inclusive, it was exhaustive, and it was... And the end result was a consensus of what our best efforts were to define what the future of Coleman Boulevard would look like. What I think is very telling, as John pointed out, you know, there's a lot of emotions, understandable emotions about fear of change. But what's very telling is, I've not heard anybody speak tonight, nor have I heard anybody speak in opposition to the Crab that has been a professional planner or an expert. And so, I agree with Michelle, I agree with John. It's always good to reevaluate previous decisions. There's nothing wrong with that. As a matter of fact, you should do that. But that should be fact-based, expert-infused, professionally-guided decisions. It should not be emotionally-charged, fear-of-change decisions. You know, it's always good to reevaluate. When you have organizations like the Coastal Conservation League, which we all know is the stalwart organization in our area, that... Whose very existence revolves around smart planning, anti-congestion, when the Coastal Conservation League is the one who's promoting the Crab, then that's telling. That tells you something. And so, I understand that there's a highly emotional, you know, atmosphere around the fear of change. But I would just ask that any reconsideration you do be fact-based and be led by expert and professional urban planners.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
I live at 1551 Ben Sawyer Boulevard. We're at a critical juncture regarding the development of our beloved Mount Pleasant. Even though we sometimes seem to be at opposite extremes, I think we all want what is best for our community. I still believe we can all work together so that everybody's needs are met. You were elected and entrusted to protect and preserve the most cherished areas of our town, and to help maintain the character and equality and quality of life we are blessed to enjoy. We realize change is inevitable, but we are still charged with making sure that those changes reflect the will of the people and are made with the ultimate of due diligence. We respectfully request the lowering of height allowances, restricting the rush to development without projected traffic studies and other due diligence, including a citizen's panel for further input. We believe that there are more appropriate places for a parking garage and high-density development than in the center of town on Coleman Boulevard or adjacent to the iconic and most revered Shem Creek. These are the very reasons people come to live or to visit. We must be careful in our rush to accommodate that we do not diminish the very characteristics that draw people here and keep them here. We can keep what is sacred and still provide for growth in other areas of town. You are, in this moment, accountable for saving the grace and character of Mount Pleasant or forever changing the face and feel of our community. Either choice will be remembered. We can't turn back the clock, but we can proceed with caution and leave no stone unturned or voices unheard before making such a drastic change to our town that is so special just the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Joe Busta, 649 King Street. I'm Joe Busta, 649 King Street here in Mount Pleasant. I'll be very brief. Some years ago, as a member of Town Council, we had a Shem Creek Overlay District established to protect Shem Creek. This Town Council and the Mayor voted unanimously to buy 40 acres of marsh to protect that area from becoming developed. So, on one side of the creeks, of Shem Creek, there is protection; on the other side, there is not. I would only ask that you keep in mind what previous council and mayors have done, the money that they spent of the taxpayers, and that you honor that by protecting Shem Creek. And I would like to close by telling you something my father told me when I was very young here in Mount Pleasant. And he looked at me and he said, "Son, just because someone throws you the ball doesn't mean you have to catch it." And I would ask you to ponder that. Thank you.
Okay. Y'all are all lined up to speak? Thank you. Bill coming up. Anita UK up there, standing up there until he finishes?
Hello. Phil Eubanks, 501 Wando Park Boulevard and Creative Pretos Open House Studio. I had signed up to speak under the item, but I have to drive to Clemson University tonight, so I thought I'd go ahead and get it over with.
Thank you, Bill.
I made a presentation at the Planning Commission when they were considering adjustments to the heights. And I think the decisions that they made last night, I mean, that night, were in error. I wanted to just remind you all, the 55-foot building height was in place way beyond, before the Crab process took place. And it was during that process that we held on to the 55 feet, but we also added three specific sites of 75 feet. It would be a maximum of six stories tall. What the Planning Commission is recommending to you all is that you drop the 55 to 50 feet and stay the four stories, and that you drop the 75 feet to 60 feet and go from six stories to five. And the fact is, you really can't do those number of stories under those heights. And you certainly can't do it with any architecture that's going to be interesting and of the quality that you want to see on Coleman Boulevard. I would really urge this body to go back to the 55-foot height and the four stories where it exists now. And I would really urge you to respect the work of the Crab and the planners that did the Coleman Boulevard master plan and stick with the 75-foot height and the six stories. But if you feel like a compromise has to be made and you need to drop to five stories, go to 68 feet. 68 feet will allow you to do good architecture and interesting buildings. And also, I want to point out, I was really glad that somebody made a comparison to White Point Gardens. White Point Gardens is one of my favorite places to go in Charleston, and I don't think that experience is diminished at all by the Fort Sumter House, which stands at the corner of King and Murray at seven stories tall, taller than anything we ever envisioned for Coleman Boulevard. And I'd also like to quote Mr. Dodds as I wrap up. It said, "Stick to your guns and abide by the master plan." Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Drive safe. Ms. Tankersley? Need a little help? No, ma'am, I won't start you until you get to the podium, I promise.
My name is Anita Tankersley. I live at 1297 Waterfront Drive in Mount Pleasant. I'm not a native, but I've been here well over 50 years. And there's, I hardly think there's anyone here that loves this town more than I do. I wanted to speak to you about, I've heard so many viewpoints tonight that I don't want to be redundant and repeat what's already been said, but about the people coming here, the traffic, all of the concerns and everything, I would reiterate the challenge to just slow down. Once something's done, it's hard to unring a bell, you know? Just slow down. And there's a difference between contentment and complacency. Just because we're content does not mean we're backward. So, let's try to preserve the beauty, the history, the heritage. And also, all of you elected people, remember what you decide today is going to be your legacy for future generations. You don't want to be remembered for messing up a good place. Thank you.
I'm feeling older by the second.
My name is Judy Dixon, and I live at 308 Center Street in the Old Village. I'm a part-owner of two small businesses headquartered in Mount Pleasant and have been working as an architect in the area since the mid-1990s. I have two children who previously attended Mount Pleasant Academy and would be going into Multry Middle School and Wando High School this year. I also currently serve on the Executive Committee of the Charleston Metro Chamber of Commerce. So, the Chamber of Commerce isn't necessarily something over there. The Chamber of Commerce is me. My husband and I chose to live in the Old Village because it allowed us access to our jobs, to impeccable schools, restaurants, services, and beautiful recreational sites. We have enjoyed walking or biking to work, to school, to our favorite bakery, to our favorite place to get a beer and a burger, to my gym, to our financial planners, to the vet. We do use our car, but we have the option and often take it to do these great things. It's remarkably refreshing not to be dependent on the car. I'm here tonight to let you know that I fully support density over sprawl and therefore urge you to leave the current zoning, including the height restrictions, along Coleman Boulevard as is. To me, adding density where there is already infrastructure makes sense. Please know that many of us residents and business owners took part in the very public process several years ago that the Crab led. We were not asleep at the wheel back then. We knew the population would grow, and the collective, we took steps to craft a master plan that would allow for that growth as well as improve the quality of our town. I supported the plan back then, and I support it today. Finally, as a member of the chamber, I wholeheartedly agree with the organization's vision for responsible growth. As a resident and small business owner, I appreciate the vision the town has in creating a successful place to raise my family and run a business. I'm proud to call Mount Pleasant home and know the best is yet to come.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My name is Harry Gregory. I'm the owner of GDC on Coleman Boulevard and own the 3.2-acre site. Grew up in the area. My great-great-great-grandfather came to Charleston in the 1780s, started a store called Gregory-Douglas &amp; Company, 26 Church Street, downtown Charleston. So, we're the predecessor company. We've been on Coleman for 22 years. I love Mount Pleasant. My first job as a kid was working in maintenance out at Sneefarm in the 1970s. Mount Pleasant's been great to us. A couple of years back, the town needed to rent some space from GDC for Multry Middle School for the farmer's market. They paid fair market rent, $27,000. We had a good year that year. I just donated it back to the town. That's hopefully the kind of, the way I feel about Mount Pleasant and what it's given to me over the years. I did have the privilege of serving on the Crab, and I hope no one shoots me. I know a lot of folks here have some questions about it, but I felt like it was an amazingly collaborative effort. There was a lot of hard work. I thought it was very democratic. And I thought it was, you know, a defining moment for the town. I thought it was the right thing to do. Is it perfect? Probably no instrument like that is perfect, but I do think that it's rooted in fact. It's rooted in statistics. It's rooted in sound judgment. And so, I would just urge the town to abide by the height guidelines that were adopted. It was important that we have a ratio of the width of the Boulevard, which is where I run my business, the right ratio between the width of that Boulevard and the height of the buildings that were going to front Coleman. And I believe that we achieved that proper ratio, and I think that it should remain. But like John Darby said, before you do anything, let's look at it more carefully and let's give it a fair shake. So, anyway, thanks for your time.
Good evening, Mayor Page, members of Town Council. My name is Zach Bearden. I'm a resident of Old Mount Pleasant. I live at 918 McCants Drive. In addition to being a landscape architect, I'm also a small business owner and father of two young boys. Two years ago, my wife and I decided to move our family to Old Mount Pleasant, specifically because of the quality of life the area supports through walkable streets, parks, schools, and most importantly, the close access to Coleman Boulevard. I was involved in extensive public meetings, charrettes, and open, inclusive process directed by the Crab that resulted in a plan that would allow the town to grow up, not out, and mature in a responsible way and allow people to live, work, and play along the Boulevard. I currently serve as a board member with the South Carolina Community Loan Fund. Many of you may know us by the former name, Low Country Housing Trust. I am extremely concerned about the Planning Commission's recommendation to change the heights within the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District and to reinstate the DRB with two additional seats. Workforce housing and affordable housing already face high barriers to entry for the development community. If we, as a community, truly want to create infill housing opportunities for our workforce, our teachers, our first responders, young professionals, we have to provide the development community with a proper set of tools, or toolset, to be able to provide these types of housing options. Workforce housing is a tough sell as it is, so let's not make it more difficult by putting up more red tape. In conclusion, I strongly disagree with the changes to the heights in the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District and elimination of a dual-track DRB process. Both changes have significant impacts on the character of Coleman Boulevard and its evolution as a place for business and citizens to flourish and grow. Mr. Dodds mentioned a master plan, and the town's comprehensive plan actually supports dense housing along Coleman and Ben Sawyer Boulevard to encourage housing options for all stages of life. A few years ago, the town went through a major branding overhaul to essentially push out to the community that the town is open for business. We adopted a phrase, "Come on over." I am afraid that we are now sending the wrong message to the business community and potential residents. I'm not sure what that message is now, but maybe it's not what we adopted a few years back. Please take into consideration how these changes affect the development of Coleman Boulevard, our main street, and the town as a whole. Thank you.
Mr. Chaffee, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Page, members of Town Council. My name is John Chaffee. I'm at 1704 James Bassford Place in Park West. And I want to go ahead and share with you a letter to the editor I, what they were fortunate enough to publish for me on July 31st, and I'll spare you and me the embarrassment of reading that verbatim. But I did want to, I'm supportive of retaining the height limitations as they stand. You know, generally speaking, my letter says that, you know, I think that, you know, there's a lot of options of what could be put on Coleman Boulevard, everything from a bank, grow a fast-food restaurant and things like that. And I, you know, I truly think that we deserve something better, because those are realistic options. You know, we had the opportunity to create a spot where the entire Low Country comes to visit for generations. While not perfect, Boulevard is amongst my peers and associates and friends, one of the coolest things we've done in 15 years here in the town. You know, I asked my son, my 15-year-old son, where he wanted to live. We were considering moving a few years back, less, about a year back. And my 15-year-old son said, "I want to live on the Boulevard, on Coleman Boulevard." That, to me, and my son doesn't care about real estate. He, you know, and he's, but he's closer to seeking out real estate and finding a place for himself to live than I think even he thinks. I think that there hasn't been enough focus on what we're trying to create here for future generations. There was a young boy over here in the crowd. He's left, but I think, I don't think there's a single person in here under 18 years old. That's what we're looking to do today. I'm looking to embrace our heritage through the park, through the Crab Walk, the art stuff. I want to, I love Mount Pleasant. I think the Shem Creek is awesome. I think of Southern Boomtown, I think of a Walmart, I think of a big parking lot, a Home Depot, not a dense place. I want this, Coleman Boulevard, to be a place that we go to, we don't drive through. So, lastly, I'll just leave you. I was taken aback by how many people I got to comment on my letter of support that agreed with my position. So, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you, John.
Madam Mayor, for those of us who have chief chair, if you have to speak into the microphone, please.
Absolutely, I will, Dr. Edwards. Could you please speak loudly and clearly for two minutes?
Governor, can you hear me?
Let's try this.
Governor, can you hear me?
Much better.
Great. I don't know if you'll like what I have to say, but I'm glad you can hear. My name is Willis Canty. I run Canty Technology. We're a business at 1067 Cliffwood Boulevard, where we will be driving very slowly, sir, and especially now that I know the sheriff will be there. I'm a small business. We are outgrowing our space. Is it working now?
Yes.
Okay, you got me again. I'm a small business. We're outgrowing our space. I am not a developer. I am not looking to build anything. But like a lot of tech companies, which you actively support and we appreciate, be it through the incubators that you put together, the accelerator, all the things that you're doing with the harbor, there are a lot of businesses that are small businesses that want to move here. And several of them, I spoke to, and they said, "Why are you going to speak at this event? You know that there will be a lot of opposition." And that's the best question I've heard tonight, to be honest with you. So, why would I want to speak out for this? It's because what you're trying to do, what the vision of Coleman is, is what we are looking for. That is what the small tech companies are looking for. Now, not all of them, but the ones that I've talked to, and there's several that have their employees that live in this great town, that love to recreate in this great town, but that none of them work in this great town. So, I hope that you will consider staying the course, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. I'm going to ask that the next three come stand and quickly come with your points, and then when we get close to the ad hoc hour, we're going to take a break. So, are y'all here to speak? Are you signed to speak? Any of you? Just one more?
No.
Are y'all good? Are you here to speak, sir? Yes, Deb, please.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of Town Council. I'm Gray Taylor, and I live at 648 Bellsar Drive. I own an office building at 652 Coleman Boulevard and actually another piece of property on Mill Street as well, which is fairly close to Shem Creek. I do live here. I do walk down Coleman. I walk to lunch. I've even been seen riding my bike on Coleman, as unusual as that sounds. Successful communities change and evolve over time. In the same way that we no longer have a fleet of 50 shrimp boats in Shem Creek, we also no longer have the web of overhead power lines that we had less than 10 years ago. Realizing this, our town spent years on a collaborative effort to develop a plan for the future. Myself, along with many other business owners, bought into this plan. We trusted Town Council. We heard what you said, we liked what you said, and we invested millions of dollars into making that plan a reality. I have an office that employs over 20 people on Coleman Boulevard. Were it not for the Coleman Boulevard revitalization plan, I can assure you that my business would be on the peninsula of Charleston. It would not be here in Mount Pleasant. It would not be here in Mount Pleasant, and none of those 20 employees would even think about living here in Mount Pleasant. At the last Planning Commission meeting, you heard from business owners, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Coastal Conservation League, and they all spoke against lowering the current heights. Not a single planning professional spoke in favor of lowering the heights, and there's a real reason for that. It's because it doesn't make sense. All it does is push sprawl out onto the other areas of the town. Rather, the Planning Commission meeting sounded, and with all due respect to the mayor, like an auction. There was nothing more than a series of numbers being thrown about, as if that would somehow solve the problem. As Mr. Eubanks pointed out, these numbers were discussed without the benefit of understanding what they mean. What do they do to design? What do they do to engineering? What do they do to the cost of buildings? Please, keep the numbers that we have in place, they were brought in through an intelligent, well-thought-out process, and it's the right thing to do to leave them as they are.
Thank you.
Take me off of that.
Yes, sir.
I'm George Brewer, and I live at, on Bennett Street in Mount Pleasant. I see many friends and neighbors who are here. I think it's because all of us are for responsible development of Coleman Boulevard. We're here because we care, we're here because this is a place that we have an investment, we love, and so we have some issues. Obviously, you have a full house. The issues are, I think, not height, I think that the issues are parking primarily. If, for example, I want to make two points. The first point is on the Boulevard. John, excuse the adjustment, but if the Boulevard had been built to whatever the recommended allowance is, let's say 55 feet, using the same parking ratio, let's say instead of 350 units, you'd have 250 units, instead of 300 parking places, you'd have 200 parking, 200 parking places, you'd still have cars parking around the Boulevard. That's the problem. The problem is not associated with height if you had responsible parking provision at that point. The other point I want to make is that I'm a partner in, at Mulberry Plaza. We bought it, we suffered through a long season of barrenness as a lot of people, as Mount Pleasant grew, but this is where we elected to invest our money and plant our flag. And so we wanted to add to Mulberry Plaza. At that time, there was great opposition to that, like many other projects that have been proposed. We, it took a year for us to be able to build out toward Coleman Boulevard, the balance of the shopping center. We had sufficient parking, as you all know, we had tenants that would want to go there, but the town of Mount Pleasant, because of a variety of different issues, perhaps because the change, it was probably the first multi-tenant parking area that we had here. But we, cooler heads prevailed, we were able to build that, and I again urged, I sat in the crab, and we came up with some studied conclusions, and so I urge you to retain the limitations that you have already placed. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Would you ask a question, ask?
Yes, may I ask you the same question, George, that I ask of Mr. Darby?
May.
How long have you been invested in the property that we know as Mulberry Plaza? How long has that been?
I'm a very old person, I can't remember, 35 years, I think. And the previous, and the developer from Atlanta built it in the 60s, and it was a colonial, you can probably tell me, colonial food store and Grant's Department Store and a drug store.
Berkeley Drugs with Doctor Spood.
Right.
Yes, we remember, thank you for that. I believe we have one more person signed up to speak.
Mayor Page, I'm signed over to the National Gender Day, but the complex would like to process.
Dan, I'd love you to speak now, if you don't mind.
Good evening, Mayor Page, members of Town Council. My name is Dan Doyle. I live in the town at 179 Ion's Borough, I'm with the Beach Company. I have extensive involvement and experience with the crab. I'm going to step away from my daytime role and speak to you as a resident of the town. It's interesting to hear the comments tonight, because everyone is very concerned about how the town grows. We, I think the bigger picture here that we have to address is that if we don't do something, if we don't address the pattern of growth that we are undertaking right now, that pattern is no longer sustainable. And it is something that the crab and the vision for Coleman Boulevard set out to address. It put the mechanisms in place to help us grow, to help us accommodate the population that we've got coming in. It's something that our planning staff has been directly involved with, we've had professionals come in and give their involvement and input. And whatever you decide tonight, I believe in the vision for Coleman Boulevard, I believe in the heights that we have currently permitted. However, whatever you decide tonight, please do so with that same level of input, whether that be from your planning staff, from professional planning experts, as well as the community, property owners, and business owners. We cannot continue on this unsustainable path. That's why the plan was put into place, and I ask you to give that consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. We've had lots of public input, I'm going to ask that we take a very brief break, so the council may be refreshed as we move into the decision-making process. So I'd ask you to be, I'll give you a 10-minute break, I'd ask you to be five minutes if you may.
I'm going to refresh. Where is that?
On this root space? Here.
I wanted to ask you about, and I know that you mentioned how to write off, well, that's really hard to know. Well, well, you, well, it's a, 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 it's The 55-foot was.
So how long have property owners that were allowed 55 feet had that allowable height?
The 55 feet was adopted in 2006.
Okay. Thank you. So since 2006, they could have 55 feet. So this council didn't change that. That didn't change because of the crab. That was the allowed height. Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over for questions. Mr. Santos?
Yes, yes, Mayor. I think 1982, 2006, it was 50 feet. And then it was in 2006, it was raised to 55. According to this paper that Mr. Nichols has in his hand. I just, Martine, can you put that up real quick? A couple of things I heard tonight that seems to be the things that most people are talking about, and that's retail, office and residential. And then I think Ms. Sinkler talked about residential, retail and civic uses. We hear that more and more. And I think everybody agrees that that's what we need. That's what we want. I think what we disagree on is the fact that we don't need 75-foot buildings. Here's a prime example. This is Shellmore Village. Shellmore Village has retail on the bottom floor. They have the offices on the second floor. And they have dwelling units on the top floor. That whole, that whole area right there has, next to it, a bank, a school, pharmacy, grocery store, restaurants and multiple businesses where you don't have to get into your car and drive. You can ride your bike. You can walk. It's very accessible and it's only 35 feet. I mean, look at that. You have the trees towering that building right there. I think we can achieve what everybody wants without having to go to 55 feet or 75 feet. I think they proved it right here that we can, we can give people what they want. A walkable, ridable neighborhood where they can go to all the different places they want to go without having to go to 75 feet. It's a clear example, and I think this would fit nicely on Coleman Boulevard with these heights. And as I said, these heights are 35 feet. And so I'm sold on 35 feet. I would like to see the, the building heights from 55 feet go down to 35 feet. And I'd like to place that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second for discussion to change the allowed 55-foot heights to 35 feet on Coleman Boulevard. Correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Mr. Garret?
Quick question, Mr. Pagarin. Just make sure. Item one is a motion that's come to us from Planning Commission. Change it from 55 to 50 feet. That's their motion.
That was their recommendation, sir, yes.
Recommendation or motion?
Well, they, they made a motion to approve that recommendation.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So we're not going to address that until we address this, correct? This motion just made in seconds. We're going to address that first before we address this.
Address what? The Planning Commission? Well, the Planning Commission recommendation is information for you all to, to help make a decision based on what you all want to do.
I don't want you, it's just a matter of technicality. To be clear, so no one's confused. When you look at item one, it's perceived that it's a motion that has come from Planning Commission. Which Santos has made a separate, completely different motion. We want to make sure that his supersede that. If that's the case, make sure everybody knows that.
Right. Planning, Planning Commission took no legal action. Meaning, nothing was decided. There was no legal action as a result of that. It was purely a recommendation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Nichols?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Council. Just hand. I have a question. I want to make sure I completely understand. I think I remember that when the original request was sent to the Planning Commission. Correct me if I'm wrong. It was to take a look at the 75-foot, the three properties, two, sort of depends on how you look at it, but the three properties.
That was the direction.
That was the direction. We had, Council didn't give them direction to talk about the, the 55-foot. Did we?
No, sir. That was not the direction.
So that came up through the Commission?
Yes, sir.
I'm right now.
Yes, sir.
And then when they went to 55, their recommendation, they, they did, there's a joint motion, right? They combined 75 to 60 and 55 to 50. And they did it as sort of a package deal?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're taking them up separately. Is, personally to our agenda. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So what we're talking about are, is the 55-foot properties. Were those properties, 50-foot properties, from 1982 until 2006?
From the area, basically from Simmons Street to about Fargo, those properties had 50 feet.
Until 2006?
That's right.
And what was it in 2006? Was that the Coleman Ben Sawyer Boulevard overlay district?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Which was a, before the Coleman Realization Advisory?
It was before the crab. Yes, sir.
And then in '06, those properties went to 55 feet, measured to the eve, correct?
That's right.
And then crab, did they change anything to do? Did the crab recommendations change anything with those 55-foot properties?
Yes, sir. That, that remained the same.
Okay. What the crab did, though, is they examined originally four locations, later changed to three specific locations and thought that the 55 feet should be 75 foot.
That's right.
And then Council at that time, back in 2008, six and a half years ago, adopted that. I just want to make sure I get my time. Okay. Very good. I also want to ask you to go back to the slide. I think it was your very first slide. The one that looks like this. The Coleman Ben Sawyer Building Heights Current slide. Is there a way to make, yeah, let's make that big. I wondered, you've explained this to me before, and I apologize, but it's complicated to me. I understand the three properties in pink are currently 75-foot, although one's been built on, correct? We call that the.
Boulevard.
Right. And that's about 60 feet, plus or minus?
To its highest point. That's right.
Okay. So technically, the other two properties at 75 feet would be allowed if they went to the full 75 feet. They turn out to be structures that were about 25% higher or taller than the Boulevard.
Another 15 feet.
Is that, am I math right on that?
15 feet. So, yeah.
Okay. But what about, and, and, and the print is small, and maybe you can just read it to me and teach me. This idea that somehow if the properties are, and I'm referring to the maximum height of 75 feet, provided certain properties are incorporated within the adjacent property, if a unified development scheme. In other words, I felt like this was some sort of a contiguous property argument under certain conditions. Can you re-explain that to me?
You're right. The, the exact language from the ordinance provides that additional property may be allowed, a maximum of 75 feet, provided these properties are incorporated and aggregated with those in one of the three locations in which 75, 75-foot height limit is allowed, which are the three in, in the pink, in a unified development scheme that meets all the requirements of the overlay district. So they would have.
Can you now interpret that for me? Who I'm not.
They would have to present some sort of development plan and building that it was, it was aggregated and incorporated and, and fit within the imperium, similar to whatever the other structure is on the, the main parcel, the, the parent parcel, if you will, the original one. It, it would have to have some sort of continuity across the street frontage mainly and as it, it kind of all, as it all relates to one another.
And then the slides, the three smaller slides, are those examples of if they were able to obtain that continuity that you just talked about, how the 75-foot height would, would expand geographically?
There are boundaries to the 70, how the 75-foot could potentially be expanded if a unified plan was presented. And those boundaries are described in the text and the ordinance. So this map is an illustration so that it shows exactly where the 75 feet could occur. So here, here's the main parcel in this, this blue color here, here and here.
Can you, can you identify the cross streets for us, Christiane? It's hard to see.
So in this one, we are looking at Multry Plaza. And so you can see Simmons Street here. And this is Coleman here and then Vincent here. So in this particular map, what you see is the main parcel where the 75-foot is allowed. What you see in, in this area is the height is required to drop as you get closer to existing residential, which is outside of the overlay district. So you're seeing a drop here. That's what this color represents to 55 feet. And then the purple line represents a final boundary and a drop to 40 feet in building height.
Is there any similar or analogous to the 55-foot properties? Is there something that if they had a unified, incorporated adjacent property agreement? Or is that?
It, no. It is just 55. Although the, the requirement regarding to drop to 40 feet adjacent to residential applies throughout.
Okay. Couple for follow-up and I'll be done. You were at the Commission meeting, correct? I was there. When the Commission voted, and I know it was a joint motion, 75 and 50, was the Commission's recommendation to this Council nine to nothing?
For that vote, yes.
That vote for 75, 60, 55 to 50 was a nine to nothing vote by our Commission?
It was unanimous, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Just want to be clear. Mr. Santos, that map to the left. Everything in green, which is 55, your motion is to change that to 55 to 35. Everything in green. And that's what, that's what you second, Mr. Santos?
It is.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Mr. Smith?
It's quick. How many property owners does this consideration represent?
The green is approximately 250 properties.
250 properties?
Yes, sir.
And for clarification, that's 250 properties that have been allowed 55-foot in height since 2006.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just for an elementary exercise for the mayor, the urban corridor is different than Shellmore Village, correct?
Yes. Well, it is in the urban corridor also. It is in the Johnny Dodd section of the urban corridor. It was built, however, prior to the implementation or the, the overlay being placed with, on Johnny Dods.
Okay. And part of creating an overlay district is to give additional or incentive for redevelopment?
It can function in that way. Overlays can, we have a couple of different ones. The urban corridor, the purpose in that overlay really is, part of it is to provide for the ability to have mixed use. That was, because you cannot do that in your standard zoning districts. You have commercial on one property. You have residential on another property. So that is one thing that the urban corridor overlay district allows to be accomplished. And then in addition to that, it does, of course, carry with it some different building heights that are not in the regular code for other properties, say on Highway 17, for example. Different densities, different setbacks, those sort of things. We do, of course, have different types of overlay districts that y'all are familiar with as well. Sweetgrass Basket Overlay District is, is different in what it tries to, to promote than the urban corridor, just as one example.
It's more of a protection than anything, the Sweetgrass.
Yeah. And it was an effort in conjunction with Charleston County, right?
Okay. To go back to Mr. Santos' motion, is 35 feet or 30s?
It's 35 feet.
35 feet. Can you go to the slide that shows what's allowed in that, what could possibly be accomplished in that many feet? If you were at 35 feet?
Well, it, it would depend on how it's measured, whether it's measured to the ridge or it was measured to the eve, first of all. If it was.
Excuse me, one second. I just want to be clear. I, I mean the ridge, the top roof.
To the top.
Yeah. Not, not, yeah.
Okay. Now, people can do flat-roofed buildings. So if you have to make an assumption that that's probably what would occur. That's what Shellmore did.
Right. Lower heights, they have flat roofs.
Flat roofs. So that they can accomplish the three floors. And so in trying to accomplish the three floors, probably do those three there. 28, 38? No. It's starting to push it. So you, you could not accomplish a, a three-story building that allows the retail office and the residential at these typical floor-to-floor heights. And these are, these floor-to-floor heights are typical industry sort of standards that I think do need to be a consideration because we, we do need to think about the longevity of these buildings, the flexibility of these buildings and the ability for the quality type of retail or office or even residential that may want to go into these space will be seeking these types of floor-to-floor heights.
So ultimately, at 35 feet, you couldn't accomplish anything except three levels of residential or possibly with a flat roof, one level of some sort of retail, but no other retail or office or anything flex above it. But you might see some two-story projects with pitched roof.
Sorry. 35 feet is the building height throughout the town for.
A house.
A house.
So if I wanted to build a house on my lawn, I could build 35 feet?
Unless you're in a flood zone, you could build a 40.
Yes.
Would you do that same analysis for me at the Planning Commission's recommended, recommendation of 50 feet?
50 feet?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, well, we could look at the four-story because they did not change the number of stories in their recommendation. So you can see what the result would be under these different scenarios here. The 49 and a half, which is under the 50 feet. But I go back to the point that I've got here at the bottom. This doesn't include a roof or a parapet. So if you have a, again, you assume a flat-roofed building on this because someone perhaps want, does want to accomplish the four stories, then they still would have a parapet on top of that in order to screen all the mechanicals on the roof. So that would be above 49 and a half feet. Typical, a par, typical height of a parapet is four feet. The residential could be accomplished. The, the scenario with the retail and the three floors of office could not be.
In the 24 years that the 50-foot height areas were in place, '82 to '06, is there an example that comes to mind that we could all think of that took advantage of 50 feet or near 50 feet? So we can appreciate that?
I'm not sure that there is one on Coleman that I can think of immediately. There are some on Johnny Dods because this applied also on Johnny Dods. And so you can certainly look at some of the hotels, for example. And then there's some other buildings that are kind of more in the center of Johnny Dods that are taller and closer to the 50s.
How about in the time period '06 through current, with the exception of the Boulevard, with the exception of the Boulevard, because that fell into the seventy-five foot, right? Is there anything that's taken advantage of the fifty-five feet in the last eight years that fifty-five feet's been available to the landowners over there?
Let's see, well, on Coleman?
Yes, ma'am. And that's what we're talking, we're talking about Coleman. Johnny Dods, upline heights of Johnny Dods, and at the waterfront gateway. We're talking about around and near Shim Creek, Coleman Boulevard.
The bank, the Heritage Trust is over forty feet or about forty-two feet there. So that could be one example there. That's measured to the eve. I believe that one's like twenty-seven feet to the eve on that one. And then overall to about forty-two. So that's an example. Juanita's is probably our first example, but Juanita Greenberg stayed under that height, stayed generally with just the two stories.
So in the thirty-two years that there's been fifty feet or higher, right, twenty-four plus the eight is thirty-two, has anything that comes to mind on Coleman Boulevard been built at or near the fifty-foot, excepting the Boulevard, which was at a seventy-five foot special area?
I can't think of anything right here.
And for clarification, Boulevard is sixty-two feet? Sixty feet.
Yes, ma'am, to the highest point.
To the highest point, Boulevard is sixty feet. Okay, any other comments? Please call for the vote.
Restate the motion, please.
I'm sorry.
Can we have the motion restated?
Yes, certainly. Christine, can you restate the motion or can I ask Gary to restate the motion? Mr. Santos, would you restate your motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve the heights from fifty-five feet to thirty-five feet at the, at the ridge.
They're all green areas.
They're all green areas, fifty-five feet areas.
Roll call, please. Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Garch votes no. Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Glasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
No.
Mr. Nichols votes no. Mr. O'Neill?
No.
Mr. O'Neill votes no. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Nein.
Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
No.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes no. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
While we're on that subject, since we're still talking about this, I'd like to make a motion that we maintain the fifty-five feet of height for the Coleman Boulevard Overlay District for all the green areas that it was before it was sent to the planning commission, to maintain it at fifty-five feet.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Nicholas.
Of course, depending on how the outcome of this vote is, it was going to be my intention, it will be my intention, unless, of course, it passes, to make the same motion, but adopting the planning commission's recommendation of fifty feet. So for those reasons, I'll be voting no on the fifty-five foot of this motion.
Thank you very much. And just to reference the consideration of the planning commission, Mr. Garch, there was a note of special consideration to the design along Shim Creek.
Yeah, you know, I'm not quite sure what cleared it is, but I tell you what, I'd be more than happy to address that in a separate motion based on, to try to clarify what they're saying, and we'll see where that gets us. We can vote on this motion.
Fine, any other comments? So we have a motion on the table to leave the fifty-five foot heights as they are, but to move forward with possibly another motion to identify special consideration for Shim Creek area. Is there any, no.
The motion only.
Just applies to the fifty-five feet.
There has to be a separate motion for that.
Might be a separate motion. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that didn't speak earlier that has signed up specifically to speak on this issue? Roll call the vote, please. Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
No.
Mr. Nichols votes no. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes.
Mayor Page votes yes. And the motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To follow that, and again, we all looked at that. I didn't come to the meeting, I don't go to planning commission meetings. I know several of you did. It's hard to interpret what was being, what was meant by the comment, but that's okay. Following the theme of sticking with what we have, as we all know, the area of Shim Creek, I believe Ms. Farrell, was originally at forty-five feet. When we call, when I say from like Live Oak towards the creek?
Can you put back the other side?
Was originally at forty-five feet.
Yes, it, well, originally it was at forty. There was an amendment that was done in, I don't remember what year, but let's see, two thousand and eight, that changed it to forty-five feet. And so up until the more recent modification, everything from Live Oak up to the Shim Creek waterfront overlay district was forty-five feet and a maximum of three stories.
And of course, the change came for the facility on Mill Street, Coleman. And you had to change the other properties, so it went fifty-five feet.
Yes, sir.
Based on that, and going back to the stickers that I am, and because I was involved on the front end formulating this crab, I'd like to make a motion that we return those properties back to forty-five feet from Live Oak to Shim Creek, in the Shim Creek, to the Shim Creek Overlay District.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, quick question. If that was the case, and that's the history, how did we, how did we get Shim Creek Inn at fifty feet? How did we get the Lighthouse at fifty-eight feet? If that was the case, how were those built, totally allowed them?
Those were well before my time, Ms. Farrell, and height limits were different. Actually, I think, you know, we gave you, we gave you the history of the height. Once upon a time, Shim Creek was a hundred and fifty feet. So I, heights have changed and varied and could have been measured differently, but not.
So just to be clear, and I think I may have mentioned this in the meeting before, if, God forbid, another hurricane were to come, the Lighthouse could never be rebuilt. Shim Creek Inn could not be rebuilt to its current height. They'd be non-conforming, is that correct?
Yeah, they would have to get some sort of variance approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals to rebuild.
To even rebuild what they have now. So we're, in essence, protecting Shim Creek more than what's currently even there with this from a height perspective.
The properties that you've mentioned are in the Shim Creek waterfront overlay district. And so their height is actually forty feet right now. They're not, they're not part of this area that is forty-five or that Mr. Garch was just mentioning.
I just hear a lot of comments that we're not, this council doesn't want to protect Shim Creek. And, you know, we've suggested and made recommendations of limits that are much lower than councils before have ever even allowed in Shim Creek. So that, that's why I was curious. So thank you.
Any other comment? Yes, Mr. Garch?
One thing I want to make sure it's unclear. Everybody knows this, but I want everybody to hear. If this motion is successful, it's going to go to our planning commission, correct? Because we are changing in orders. So they will review it, have a public hearing, and then it'll come back through the system to us via the planning committee.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Taggart.
You don't talk your game, man. Come on, Pags.
Madam Mayor, could you restate the motion?
Mr. Garch, would you please restate your motion, please?
The motion was to change the height from Live Oak to the Shim Creek Overlay District from fifty-five feet to forty-five feet, the original crab recommendation, which, well, I, let me just say, change the height from fifty-five feet to forty-five feet, from that area from Live Oak to Shim Creek. We had a couple of hiccups throughout the overlay district, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Nichols?
Yes, we've talked about number of properties and locations. Can we break out the red laser and give us an idea of what Council of Garch is talking about, about how many properties are affected?
Well, the blue is already forty-five, so that would, those would just remain the same. There's ten properties. It's the ten that front Coleman.
These are the ten that were rezoned at the time the office building and parking structure?
Recent, yes, sir.
Roll call the vote, please. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Page votes yes, unanimous. All right, thank you very much. Item number two on a new business we still need to address, the seventy-five foot on three parcels. And this was a lengthy meeting also. And I would like to lead this off by, I do have a copy of the crab. I carry around a copy of the crab and the budget and the comprehensive plan in my car. So if you ever see any of the grocery stores, they're in my car. You're welcome to see them at any time. Can, just for me, again, elementary purposes for the mayor, I think we've got the first one. If you could just give me the cross streets of the blocking issue so that everyone knows now what can go seventy-five foot by block? If that would, that would help me, please. If you just tell me the cross streets.
To further explain, to expand it?
Yes, this is for the expansion of properties that are seventy-five feet, what other properties actually can be seventy-five feet. Just explain that to me.
Okay, so on Mulberry Plaza, we have here at the corner of Simmons and Coleman, the property that is allowed seventy-five feet. The area that if a unified development plan was presented and property was aggregated in some fashion, that could also have seventy-five feet is shown here. And so some of this is not likely to happen because it includes the church and includes the six fifty-six Coleman, if I've got the right address, that was recently built. But it essentially extends over to Vincent here. So it would be those properties here. This is the gas station, for example.
So potentially the gas station and oops.
Right.
Okay, thank you. The next one?
Then on the Boulevard, this is Fairmont and this is Fairgo. And so it could run all the way across the frontage on Coleman to those two streets. And then would include these areas that are, unfortunately, it's not showing up very well. They're hatched. It kind of looks white to you, I'm sure it looks white to me. But it is this area here along Fairmont and this area here along Fairgo that could, with the way this text is written.
Go seventy-five feet?
Yes.
So mikes bikes, compliments, subway, scratch?
Right.
Okay. The last one?
Last one is Sea Island Shopping Center here. And so it is really those properties that are just behind Sea Island along Shermer Avenue that could be increased up to seventy-five feet. Again, if it was presented in some sort of unified plan.
So Benton Sawyer couldn't crawl all the way over to Rifle Range?
No, I don't believe so. I've got a better map that I can look at here, because it's kind of whited out on that. No, it does stop where Shermer, and Shermer turns back around into the parking lot at the, at the shopping center. So this would be the cutoff here. And then the cutoff would be that back property line of those homes or businesses, is a variety of things that exist on Shermer would be the cutoff for that.
So it does include New York Butcher and Absolutely Fabulous and the Taylor?
It doesn't include any of these, these things that come past on, past that property.
Absolutely Fabulous, yes, sir. It's an antique shop, secondhand furniture. Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate understanding seventy-five feet. I also look in the crab and I see something about variations in height where maybe they're not all seventy-five feet. Maybe that block of seventy-five foot doesn't look like seventy-five foot from the street. Could you explain, I don't mean to put you on the spot about the history of the crab, but, you know, that there was this tiered effect? So the buildings might be lower in the front and get to seventy-five feet and then tier back down?
Well, there is a, I don't, there is an illustration in that report that shows how the heights would drop as it approached residential areas. And I, I think perhaps that's the one that you're referring to. It shows seventy-five down to fifty-five and then forty as a residential area, as an approach to the residential area.
Right. Thank you very much. Mr. Garch has?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor. This is another one. To me, I see this, I want to separate this out from the issue of seventy-five feet. First thing, we've all, we're all part-time public servants, but all of a sudden, we're starting to become full-time as far as learning how to be planners. Now, I'm just kidding, none of us are planners, but we're all listening. I'm here to tell you that this, what I call aggregation of properties to achieve seventy-five feet, where a dedicated area is seventy-five feet, it got by me. I don't know how I missed it, but I missed it. I'm not a fan of it. Therefore, that being the case, I would like to move that we remove the principle of aggregation that applies to properties next to the properties that are already seventy-five and send them back to the height that they're supposed to be, which I believe is fifty-five feet.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that?
Just to clarify, Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the primary property that's designated for seventy-five feet would remain as is?
Yes, ma'am, I have the.
And that's the property that's closest away from, I mean, further in from the street? As we get out towards the streets, the property would be at a lower rate, forty-five, thirty-five?
Right now, I'm focused on the part that is what I call the aggregate clause. Where properties next to that can go to seventy-five as well. My motion is to remove that opportunity to do that. I'll address the next one with a seventy-five feet, a separate motion. But this one here is, to me, to keep it clean, to remove the aggregate principle I call.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this issue?
It goes, it goes back, as I said, it would go back to the fifty-five feet. Right? That, like, it would be like the greens.
Ms. Garch, do you have a question?
Oh, Gary, Gary'd asked me a question.
I'm in, okay.
Madam Mayor, point of clarification. It wouldn't go back to the green, it's already green.
Right.
It just wouldn't have the opportunity to go purple. Ms. Stokes Marshall and I weren't following.
Thank you very much, you're correct. Right now, it is, right now, it is sitting there next to a seventy-five foot parcel in green. But if they get their act together, they can jump right up to seventy-five feet and they don't have to check in with us. I'm saying, my motion is to remove that from happening.
The aggregate.
Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, often referred to as the creeping, is that correct? The creeping height?
I think we've discussed it as creeping. Yes, I think we've discussed it as creeping.
Just trying to make sure that all of, it's very clear. Thank you.
Absolutely. Another comment by you, Mr. Nichols?
Sure, yeah, this is one that we picked up and learned about a few months ago. And I'm hoping that we have a near, this is a no-brainer from my perspective. The next one will be sort of the, you know, the money deal where it's seventy-five, sixty-five, sixty, fifty-five. But I'm hoping that this council sees the wisdom and give Mr. Garch a motion.
I certainly appreciate your urging there, so we'll call, roll call the votes. Sorry, I get a little testy. Mr. Carrier?
Aye.
Mr. Carrier votes yes. Mr. Garch?
Aye.
Mr. Garch votes yes. Mr. Glasson?
Aye.
Mr. Glasson votes yes. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill votes yes. Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Santos votes yes. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Smith votes yes. Ms. Stokes Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall votes yes. Mayor Page?
Aye.
Mayor Page votes yes. Unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols?
Yes. Mayor Page, I want to make a motion that we adopt the planning commission's recommendation for the parcels that are, that currently have a height limit of seventy-five feet to be reduced to sixty feet for the maximum of five floors. That's my motion. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I'm just looking at our notes. Mr. Brewer sent us an email, a written communication, and spoke tonight. And I just want to make, he said that property was in the family for about thirty-five years.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Darby's property, I believe, was older than he is, which is younger than I am.
So that's pretty old, Madam Mayor.
Yep.
Oh, that's cold. Sorry, it's, it's a little long. My question with those two, Sea Island Shopping Center, Mr. Batson?
Batson Hewitt?
Yeah, the history on that one, please.
I believe they developed that property when I was in grade school or maybe entering middle school, so it had to be in the nineteen-sixties. And it started with Eckerd's and the Pigley Wiggly, actually Eckerd's was later, a Belk's and a Pigley Wiggly and some other shops in the nineteen-sixties.
So, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So the motion is regarding specifically the three purple dots on our map here, which Ms. Farrell's done an outstanding job of pointing out to us. The creeping effect has gone away now, is no longer an option. So, and the Boulevard is fairly new.
So the vote is really specifically regarding two properties, unless, God forbid, the Boulevard falls, goes.
unless, God forbid, the Boulevard falls, goes away. Is that fairly accurate in my restating the motion that we're considering voting on here?
I'll have to defer to Ms. Farrell.
Regarding the two properties specifically?
Right. The Boulevard is developed, and so that does leave just the two.
And we've heard from both property owners in writing, one tonight, to not negatively affect their property. Is that correct, Madam Mayor?
I believe we have heard from all three, even though one isn't affected because they've already developed. Yes, that's correct. Any other discussion, Mr. Santos?
Yeah, I'm just asking, is this to the roof line or to the ridge?
I'm sorry?
Is this, is this to the eaves or to the ridge?
To the eaves.
So, at the end of the day, to the ridge, how high is it, can it be? With the, you know, covering for the HVAC and all? At the end of the day, that's what people see is the total building, not to the ridge, but.
Well, they typically would have a parapet up there, and a parapet is usually about four feet tall.
Okay, so if you have one to the eve, sixty-foot to the eve, what would the total, or could the total height of the building be to the top of the pad?
The top, well, I'm sorry, I'm not quite understanding your question.
The height of the building, from the very, very top of the building to the bottom, not to the eve, but at the end, you know, at the end of the day, people see the whole building. They don't think about the eve, it's sixty feet to the eve, they look at the whole building. What is, what would the total height of the building be to the top of the parapet?
Okay. It would depend on whether or not it was a parapet or a roof. Because a roof could be put on top as well, if something's measured to the eve. So if it is a parapet, a parapet is typically about four feet. So if you're sixty feet to the eve, plus four, which is sixty-four, the roof would vary and it would depend on, on design of the roof. It could, they're not probably going to do a full pitched roof. It would be probably more of a Mansard style of roof, which would not be quite as tall. But it could probably add, I don't know, fifteen, twenty feet or so?
So the sixty-foot building could in fact be a seventy-five-foot building?
To the, yeah, if visually measured to the top, which I think is your question, right? What it looks like or not?
I'm not sure that we're, I'm not sure that we're doing anything with the sixty-foot. If we're allowed to go, if they're allowed to do that, at the end of the day, the average person's going to see a seventy-five-foot building. Correct?
Well, I will offer you a comment, because I said it earlier. If it's just measured to the eve, then everybody's going to just do a flat roof. And you're going to get the same, you're going to get the same number of floors anyway. You know, the recommendation was five floors and sixty feet. And so I think that what you would in turn see is not a variety in architectural styles, but everyone will look to do the flat roof.
Can you guarantee that?
No, I absolutely can't.
That's, that's my concern, you know?
I guess my question would be, would you want to see all flat roofs? I personally would rather see.
Well, no, of course I don't, but I don't want to see a seventy-five-foot building. We're right back to where we started from, I think, if they can build that high. You know, we're saying sixty feet, but at the end of the day, if they can get up to seventy-five, it kind of defeated our purpose, I think. I could be wrong, but that's what it seems like to me.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Couple of comments. First of all, when we say everyone, there's two pink spots in play. I doubt anyone's going to, and God forbid, level the Boulevard tomorrow and start over. So there's, there's two spots. And seventy-five feet is twenty-five percent larger and taller than the Boulevard. I am convinced that the Boulevard represents as big as something should be in that section of town, Coleman Boulevard, Sherem Creek. I said it before, I'll say it again, it is special and it is different. It is not Johnny Dodd's Boulevard, it is not one of the waterfront gateways. Frankly, at the waterfront gateway, I support a hundred-foot building. Because you come in towering over it. But as you come down, to me, the Boulevard represents as big as it should be. And that's basically sixty feet, plus or minus a foot. Am I right about that, Ms. Farrell?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Also, I want to talk about, boy, there's been a lot of arguments, you know, put out there. And one of them is the argument about, we need to go up to avoid sprawl. And I like that idea as a sort of an academic notion. But in reality, I'm not sure that individuals or families who are moving to Mount Pleasant, who want a little yard, want some garden, want some place to play, are either going, you know, we're either going to move off to North End of Mount Pleasant and get some yard and get some garden, or we're going to move into a condo on Coleman Boulevard. I just don't think those two go together. So, I get, I get the academic argument, but I'm not buying it in the, in the real world. I really think that of the two heights, of the, of the two votes that we've had, and the fifty-five foot remained the same, I get that. I think this is really the huge one. Mr. Garwitz's initial motion, critical, glad we got that passed. I think this is almost equally as, as critical. And I hope that we vote not with, you know, am I going to get support tomorrow? Or who's going to write me a nice letter? Or who's going to clap for me? But we actually just try and do the right thing and respond to our citizens. And I think a fair statement is, if you just grab citizens, not planners, not folks who are in a group and are vested in that, and you just take them down to Coleman Boulevard and you say, hey, does that look like anything else should be really bigger than the Boulevard in this particular area of town? I think the resounding answer to that is no. And I did have that quote that got brought out, I didn't even realize it in the paper. But when folks come to Mount Pleasant, we might go over to, you know, town center to do some shopping at Belk's or something like that. But when you're really going to show off Mount Pleasant, saying, look what we've got here, you stop at Waterfront Park, you go over to Patriots Point, and then you take them down to Sherem Creek and Coleman Boulevard. And I want to keep that aha moment, that aha factor. That's where I'm coming from.
Just, just a question. You know, going to sixty feet, how can we, how can we do this to where the total height of the building is sixty feet? Christian, the total height, at the end of the day, that's what people see. You know, how do we do that? How could we? I'm just, you have to help me here, because I'm not a, you know, an architect or planner or anything like that. I'm just trying to figure out how, at the end of the day, the total height of the building could be sixty feet. And I'd be okay with that. But I don't want to go to sixty feet, and then once you add on, you know, everything, it ends up seventy-five feet. Because I think we just defeat our purpose.
It's described in how it's measured. It would be how it's measured. The description would be, or the specification in the text would say, measure to the highest point.
Okay, so then we can, can we make an amendment to the motion and say to the highest point? Sixty feet to the highest point?
I don't believe it's your motion, sir.
No, I'm asking.
If you wish to move to amend, you would do so, and then there'd be a vote on the amendment, if it's seconded.
I'll make a motion that we amend to say, the motion to say to the highest point, sixty feet to the highest point?
So for clarification, we have seconded.
There's a motion on the table to seventy-five to sixty feet, measure to the eve. And the amendment is to change the measurement to the highest point of the building.
Right.
And there needs to be a second, and then a vote, if there's a second, on the amendment. And then you go back and vote on the, on the initial.
Okay, so, for total clarification, we have an amended motion with an amended second to have measurement, total height, to the ridge of sixty feet.
To the highest point.
To the very highest point on the building. That includes the air conditioning, everything.
Well, you know, I mean, we can get into that, I will tell you, we don't, we don't count elevator pinnages that come. We don't count those things in building height. So I'm talking more, I guess, about the features like parapets and roofs.
To the highest point, at sixty-foot would be the parapet, so they'd be five foot? Well, actually, they wouldn't be as tall as the fifty-five-foot tall buildings, correct?
Yeah.
Ultimately, for clarification. Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, again, I'm just trying to follow along here. So, the two properties are Sea Island Shopping Center and Mulchrey Plaza. And if, I can just ask, Christian, if those buildings were a hundred and fifty feet tall, in your expert opinion, and you were standing on the roof, could you see Sherem Creek?
Oh, really, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just trying to understand the parallel between those two properties and Sherem Creek.
I'd probably good, you know, a hundred and fifty feet's pretty tall.
Thank you.
All right, we have an amended motion, amended second on the floor. Call for the vote.
What are we voting on first?
The amendment.
The amendment.
Mr. Santos?
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
No.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Mayor Page?
No. Now we're voting on the first motion, which is a motion to amend the seventy-five-foot tall buildings. Take that down to sixty-five foot, measure to the eve, sixty-foot, to the, measure to the eve.
Correct.
Which, with the six floors, like it came from the plan?
Exactly like it came from.
Five floors.
With six floors.
It's that six stuck in my head.
So down to sixty feet.
Although there might be some stop, but that's, yeah.
But sixty feet. And we have fifty-five feet now that has been passed. Now we're dealing with sixty-foot instead of seventy-five, which is lower than the Boulevard.
No, not a deal.
It's sixty-two as opposed to sixty. For clarification, starting, I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands. Call for the vote.
Mr. Carrier?
As a member of the crab, I will vote no.
Mr. Carrier votes no. Mr. Garch?
No.
Mr. Garch votes no. Mr. Glasson?
No.
Mr. Glasson votes no. Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols votes yes. Mr. O'Neil?
No.
Mr. O'Neil votes no. Mr. Santos?
No.
Mr. Santos votes no. Ms. Stokes-Marshall? I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, excuse me. Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith votes no. Ms. Stokes-Marshall?
No.
Ms. Stokes-Marshall votes no. Mayor Page?
No.
Mayor Page votes no.
Mr. Garch?
Madam Mayor, we're not, we're not in agreement with the motion that came from the Planning Commission. That's clear, or the other motion. Again, I'll spend a lot of time on this one. And you, this is when you really start to get into a number of floors, how it works, architectural things, all those things that you never thought about, you start listening to. And I'm listening to all of them, and I've been reading, and I'm listening to everybody tonight, and I've read, read all the emails. And I'm going to go back to where I started with the initial formulation of the crab. As I was listening to them, because I made almost every one of those meetings, just to listen. Been partaking all the discussion hours for them. We'll give one minute. Good to see y'all. Anyway, I'll get back to what I was saying. We all know we arrived at these areas and the whole, and so you start to pay attention to it, and you notice that heights are dispersed up and down the Boulevard. So we don't have the issue of a tunnel. The first building gets built, it's the Boulevard. Got to start somewhere. Heard a lot about it. Lot of bad things, heard good things about it. My, my son, who's a college graduate, and all his buddies that live there, they think it's absolutely incredible. I understand, that's them. As I told y'all before, you're listening here, my eighty-five-year-old dad, he can't stand it. I get it. And this is where you come into the balance of listening to your citizens, but also being charged as a public servant and realizing what was going on back then in two thousand two, three, and four, formulate this crab. Because they recognized, like I heard earlier tonight, we were already sprawled out. We got it handed to us by the county when five thousand acres was approved as Dunes West. And then, in the early two thousands, Carolina Park, we took them. And that was it. We reached, we reached the National Forest. And we said, you know what, guys, people are going to keep coming. Like Johnny Dodd said, he's right, and Mark Clark built, they're coming. We've improved the Ravenel Bridge, it's eight lanes, they continue to come. It's a wonderful place. Everybody can't keep going north of the Alpines Connector, in the land of two-nine-four-six-six, where I've resided since nineteen ninety-three. But keeping the theme of where I am with this, and, and I, you know, again, you got to start somewhere, like I said, in those buildings and the Boulevard. And I believe the seventy-five feet is something that I want to stick to, I want to adhere to, and it can work. But for me, based on that, I'm prepared to make a motion that says that I move that the current seventy-five-foot buildings remain as they are, but the seventy-five foot is moved to the interior of the piece of property. Tiered back is the word you hear. What's on the front on the road is not seventy-five feet. So I, I move it to the interior. Now, we get into a, into a complex thing here, and I'm going to finish my motion. So I'm maintaining my seventy-five feet in the interior, but I would say the front section, it could be fifty-five feet, like the rest. But I would like to take that in my motion and not send it to the Planning Commission. I'd like to send it to the Planning Committee, the elected body, and allow them to work with our professionals, our planning staff, and see how we can gel that into something that we all understand and works, based on number of floors, based on architecture, based on the things we're discussing tonight about pitch and about look. So we don't have a bunch of flat roofs. So the motion again is, is to maintain those two areas at seventy-five feet, with the seventy-five foot being moved to the interior of the property, removed from the front of the road, and that to be designated, again, by our Planning Committee, more importantly, our planning staff. That's my motion.
I'll second. Have a motion, it's a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make it clear, I voted no on the sixty-foot simply because of where it was being measured to. I agree with the sixty-foot, I agree with what the Planning Commission said, except for the fact that I wanted it, you know, you know, measured to the highest point of the building. I want to just make sure that was clear, that's why I voted against it. Because it could be seventy-five foot again, at the end of the day, as, you know, discussed by our Planning Director. So I want to make sure that was on the record, that's why I voted against it. I like the sixty-foot, I really do, but I just want it at the highest point.
I think that's very clear, Mr. Santos. Any other comments? Mr. Nichols?
First of all, I appreciate the fact that we've had a number of speakers and some robust debate. Although, it seems like I've heard more from the audience than I have, except for a couple of my colleagues here, and I commend my colleagues who've spoken out, whether they agree with me or not, I learned something from them and I appreciate that. I'm astonished that we have a diverse Planning Commission. And I joke about it, I know that Planning Commission is extremely diverse and not all nine of them send each other a Christmas card each Christmas. I know I've been to those meetings. And yet, they found a way, nine to nothing, to make small adjustments, but meaningful to the folks of this town, and really talking about five feet in one instance and one floor in another instance. And yet, basically, this council has decided, and that's our job, I guess, but the council collectively decided that that's not where it wants to go. I hope that we could go someplace, and maybe Mr. Garwitz is on to something here. I'm actually a little bit in shell-shock, so that's where I'm at.
I certainly appreciate that. More than anything, before we take the vote, I'd like to thank very much the citizens that came out tonight and the developers and the builders who came out tonight. Because this has truly engaged citizens, and this is how we make changes. This is how we make the community better. So as your mayor, I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to call for the vote. Yes, question?
Are we voting on sending it back to the committee or to these new heights, or vote?
His motion is?
My motion is to maintain the seventy-five feet at two locations, but to move it into the interior of the property. And that, and what, how far into the interior off the road, I want to send, I want that to be determined by our Planning Committee of Council, working with our planning staff. When they're finished with it, I am sure then it will go to our Planning Commission, or it can go to full council, which has still got to go back to Planning Commission, right, Mr. Pagreen?
Yes, sir.
For a public hearing? For a public hearing. It still has to go through that process, because if this is a successful vote, we're changing an ordinance.
Thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. And Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Paul, Plan Commission often have your crab report with you, do you?
I don't, but try me.
On page nineteen, there's an illustration there on the, the heights as it relates to floors and setbacks. There's a picture that I think illustrates what you're trying to communicate.
Correct.
And I, and just ask that, I would want to see if that's what the intent of your motion is. Basically, so if I'm standing, the setback from the street is graduated higher away from me as I'm standing on the setback line.
Correct. If you're on that street, you're not going to know that there's seventy-five feet in the center of that building.
The Charleston Place Hotel, would that be an example of what you're speaking of?
At the risk of, before I answer, from where someone tells me that I'm trying to be like Charleston, don't go there, please. Yes, that's how that building is.
The question wasn't in the spirit of trying to become Charleston, that wasn't. I just had to try and look for a billing illustration so that I can vote appropriately.
Exactly. The fronts of, of how it fronts King and Market and Meeting, I believe it's at fifty-five feet. And in the center, it probably goes up to about eighty-five, ninety feet, I, I don't know, but you never see it.
And, and Madam Mayor, my, thank you. And my, my last comment was before the vote is called. I, I, I do want to point out a comment I heard tonight from one of the three parcels that was, that is, is talked about here in the Boulevard. I want to seek clarification that I heard John Darby say that there was never a closeout, follow-up best practices with the town in that project, with what worked well, what didn't work well. Is that an accurate statement? And is it common practice for us not to have kind of a closeout meeting discussion with large developers like that? And if not, perhaps we could consider doing something like that? I mean, coaches do that with their players, CEOs do that with their employees, and certainly the town with the scope and magnitude. And we're only talking about three parcels and three properties here. So this isn't some unrealistic, unachievable point I'm trying to make, it's three properties. And we still have an opportunity to have an open dialogue discussion with the company. What worked well, what would you do differently? Because as stated several times, none of us, none of us, our community volunteers that are appointed on the Planning Commission, our elected officials on the Planning Committee, nor this full council are experts in these fields, Mr. Garwicz. And it just seems to me that we would serve our community that we all love better by getting information from people who are in the know and experts in those fields. I just want, would like for that to be in your consideration, Madam Mayor, Council, that we do have some kind of discussion on these projects moving forward and make up on that basis. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Smith, I would challenge you to say that we are having those, we're having them publicly, and they are encouraging change. Mr. Garge said it earlier, the Boulevard is the first vision of what it looks like, and a lot of people didn't like it. We've been here many nights, talking about it and discussing it. I'm ready to move forward. Call for the vote.
Mr. Carrier.
No.
Mr. Garge.
Aye.
Mr. Glasson.
Aye.
Mr. Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill.
Yes.
Mr. Santos.
No.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Stokes Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Page.
Aye. Thank you.
I'll give you all a few minutes if you all are going to be going home.
Thank you.
All right, that's too.
Thank you, Madam.
Not you. Not you.
Crazy, like an auctioneer, very auctioneer.
We tried. I was thinking that.
Top time.
Okay. All right, come on, guys. The sooner we sit down, the sooner we get it done. No break. Item number three under Planning is first reading to amend the ordinance, Chapter one fifty-six pertaining to the Design Review Board. Ms. Farrell?
Yes. This particular text amendment is something that came at the direction of Town Council, and the direction specifically was to draft amendments to remove the staff review option for design review and require DRB for approval for all commercial projects or anything that is subject to design review going forward. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this at their July, July meeting, and they recommended approval of this text amendment. They did include in addition, however, that for any projects already submitted to staff, that there would be an additional six months to receive final approval from staff. The Planning Committee in turn reviewed this recommendation, as well as the, the draft that had been originally presented by staff. The Planning Committee also recommended approval of this text amendment by a vote of three to one. This included with it a condition that was a little bit different than that of the Planning Commission's with respect to projects already submitted. Their condition was that any project submitted to staff could continue through that process through the end of this year, so December thirty-first. But if they do not have final approval by that time, that they would have to go to the Design Review Board. And then the Planning Committee also directed that there should be a provision added for minor projects for staff review. And so I do have that text that we, I have, Mr. Paglioni helped with draft, tried to address that direction that was provided by the Planning Committee. And so this does provide for an exception for minor projects, that they can request to go to staff if written request is attached to the application. And with that written request, they have to provide confirmation that the proposed project, including all phases, does not exceed two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The determination of whether the project is minor, and that the written confirmation of the project cost is reasonable, is within the discretion of the zoning administrator. And then as is necessary, the zoning administrator may consult with the building official regarding the projects involving building improvements. So the, the text that is in front of you tonight includes the recommendation, the additional recommendations that were made by the Planning Committee regarding minor projects, and then also for projects that are already, have already been submitted, that they would be able to continue until the end of this year.
Second, I have a motion for approval and a second, any discussion in one council? Mr. Smith?
I have, I have.
Okay.
At the Planning Committee, we didn't have an amount in there for minor and major. So that was inserted, you all talked about this?
Yes, sir, that's a number we discussed, and, you know, obviously, it's just a number that staff felt comfortable with in determining what is a minor project. Of course, as time goes by, as we discussed, the Planning Committee, it's a very delicate, what is minor, what is major. So I don't claim pride of authorship for the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, but that was the best.
That's higher than I thought, but I, I agree with you, I think it's generous and it's probably appropriate for what's going on in our community.
Mr. Smith?
Madam Mayor, I have a great deal of admiration and respect for my fellow council member, Mr. Carrier, but I'm afraid Mr. Carrier's not remodeled or built anything recently. With all due respect, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, especially in the town of Mount Pleasant, doesn't go very far. I would propose that we move that number to five-hundred-thousand dollars for improvements. Have you bought a sign lately that complies with our, our laws, Elton and the next? That's, that's way too low. With a simple renovation on an existing building, no exterior, for a funeral home, seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Simple renovation. Half a million dollars is very, very fair. I, I understand.
Yeah, I don't care.
I looked at, so if we would consider, I, I would appreciate staff's work on this and coming up with this as a solution. I was the one who was struggling with coming up with some type of benchmark so that we could protect those small projects or, or small businesses who wouldn't be subjected to what, in my opinion, is another layer. So if we would consider moving, striking that two-fifty and moving that to five-hundred in your motion and the second, I, I would ask you to consider that.
From a procedural standpoint, you are correct, sir, that you can do that, but that would be at final reading, that you could amend the ordinance as written.
Mr. Nichols?
I just want, not saying yes or no, I'm wondering if you might give us an idea, and, you know, always asking for data. So, any idea how many projects come before staff were, you know, in the range of a quarter million dollars or, or less, and vice, half a million dollars?
No, not really, because this would apply only to the exterior changes of a building or to the site, because designer view is, is site as well.
It's outside, not inside.
So it's not, so when we do get submissions for renovations, they typically are, include an outfit.
Gotcha.
To, to the building.
In my lingo, this is an inside, this is outside.
This is outside.
And so, yeah, when, Mr.